Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Chesapeake Beach to order, July 5th, 2023. And I'd like to take role, and Madam Clerk, please note that all Commissioners are present. Now I'm on number two approval of the July 5th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Agenda. Do I hear approval?
I submit approval. Make a motion to approve.
I second. Any questions or concerns, any issues about the agenda? All in favor of passing a passing motion to approve? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, approval of the minutes of the May 24th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Any second? Any additions, any changes? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. All right, so tonight is our annual election of officers for both Chair and Vice Chair, and in my experience, leadership positions give members of committees and commissions the opportunity to feel engaged and directly involved with the process of completing the objectives at hand. They also provide more experienced leaders within the town to assist with the ongoing task of keeping the residents and businesses and community healthy. I appreciate that everyone on this commission is highly capable of either job and could eventually be in one of these positions if they so desire. At this point, I would heartily nominate a very dedicated and responsible Commissioner Kathleen Burt as Chair at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a second?
You do.
Do I have any other nominations? Ain't none. I will close the nominations. All in favor of Kathleen Burt as Chair, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Commissioner Burt, you are Chair. Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to continue, or do you want me to continue with the Vice Chair? Let me continue with Vice Chair, and then you'll, you can take over, how about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's open the nominations for Vice Chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Adam Chair?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, Sheriff Burt.
I'd like to, I'd like to actually nominate you as the Vice Chair. You've done an exemplary job as, as the Chair, and I think you've provided great leadership and direction for us, and I'd like to see, I'd love the opportunity for, to work with you further as the Vice Chair.
Thank you for those kind words. Okay, do we have a second? Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? We have no other nominations? Okay, I see none. All right, we're close, closing nominations. All in favor is Cindy Greengold as the Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, no, all right. We will go ahead and switch positions then, and I will let Sheriff Burt take over. Do you have your name tag on the election button? Oh, I have my name tag. I'll stay, I'll stay here, and we'll just, we'll just keep it as it is. Okay, that's fine. Okay, go.
Okay.
Number six.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for the vote. As the Chair, I, I take it as a great honor, and I look forward to serving you as well as for you and with you, and I will do my utmost best to, to move our agenda and to be responsive to all the, our constituents in the community and, and their, their concerns and interests. Having said that, does anybody in here would like to offer public comment on, on any item? Please come forward, state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kristin DePhilip. I'm here for 8501 Bayside Road, which is Horizons on the Bay in Chesapeake Beach. This evening, you're looking at a text amendment for an ordinance revision. I'm here representing Ken Muller. He's the developer and the owner of West Beach LLC. They're responsible for building Horizons. I've been with property management, Mount Harmony Property Management, since 2007, and with Horizons since 2010. A little bit of history on the building. Ken worked with Gerald and several town councils to get HOB to fruition, starting as early as the 1990s. He broke ground in 2003. One of the conditions of the approval of the building at the time was that the first floor be dedicated for commercial space. There are nine commercial units there in the building. They're designated in the governing documents. Those documents are available in Calvert County Land Records. The units are currently owned and titled either by the Council of Unit Owners of Horizons on the Bay, or by the developer or individual unit owners. Each of those parties, they pay real estate taxes, they have to pay condo fees, they're legal owners of the building, and they have their own rights within the building. Some of the unit owners serve on committees, just like yourselves, and they play an integral part in operations within the building. Over the years, Horizons has been home for, for physical therapists, accountants, estheticians, different professional offices. At inception, the county dictated how many parking spaces that we should have designated for those commercial spaces, the use and the board, the use and the, I'm sorry, the board and the management for Horizons have operated the entire property envelope, and we make sure that all of those accommodations are in place, and that every business and each of their clients and their patients are adhering to all of the specifications that were laid out at the very inception of the building. I was in attendance at an earlier council meeting for the town of Chesapeake Beach. There were some comments, and I just wanted to put out a few points of clarification before the town reviewed those text amendments. We have received a request, an application by a tenant, to rent a 10 by 10 office space within the building for the purpose of operating a waxing business. It is not a salon. Horizons is a gated community, however, during regular business hours, there is a gate that is open for clients for package delivery, mail delivery. It is not regulated during regular business hours. There are plenty of commercial spaces, not just to accommodate the current businesses, but all businesses, you know, that could be within Horizons. And then this is not the first esthetician-type business that has been in Horizons. There was one in the past. Before considering the application and approving it, we do want to make sure that every single business entity would be able to operate so that none of the residents were disturbed. So we want to make sure that everything in the building stays cohesive. We saw a lot of effects during COVID on businesses. Unfortunately, a lot of our tenants did not survive, or they really had to, you know, downsize, so that left a lot of our commercial spaces empty. I'm finally seeing an improvement in the commercial spaces and the amount of commercial businesses, not just within Chesapeake Beach, with, within Calvert. So I'm hoping that the town, that the commission, they would consider the request so that we can try and get another business occupying a space within Horizons. I look forward to the town council meeting in July, and I do extend any opportunity that any of the Commissioners here or the council members would like to tour the building and see the facilities before making any decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. She's too. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, since there's no other person present to provide any comment, none on the phone, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, zoning text amendments permitting with conditions certain commercial uses in the RV District. Chris, do you want to share the document that you had given and elaborate on that?
Sure, I'll, I'll give a review of the staff memo. In a nutshell, when the town council received your set of recommendations on the list of permitted uses and changes of zoning text, it made its own decisions about some things, and it eliminated a set of commercial uses from the RV1 zoning district. And the unintended consequence for this applicant here, or this person here, is that those uses that would have been allowed to continue are no longer allowed in that building. And this is not a situation where there's a, something is grandfathered because there was nothing there in some of these units. So nothing can be classified as nonconforming, and, and nothing can be grandfathered because it didn't exist. The units exist as commercial, but they're vacant. So in order for us to issue or permit to allow for a commercial unit or a commercial business in one of those units, we would need to amend the zoning, make them permitted. And what I've suggested was making, kind of just restoring the uses that were previously permitted as permitted moving forward, but applying a condition so that while they're allowed in the RV1 district, they're only effectively allowed within this particular property in a mixed-use situation here. So that's why the condition, in each case, each of the four cases says, "The use shall be integral part of an existing or otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial and multifamily development." There are four distinct uses. One is office and clinic for medical and dental examination. One is a retail establishment carrying one type of interrelated good, like a bookstore or gift shop, florist. One is a personal care services, including barber shops and salons, laundry, dry cleaning, drop-off stations, travel agencies, insurance brokers. And then the fourth one is artist and photographer galleries and studios. So, in each case, if this, something like this were adopted, a condition would be placed on it. It would be a C use, conditional use in the table, and then you go to Section 2911, and you, where all the conditions are listed by use, and when you saw that particular use, like office or clinic or salon, you would say, okay, that's a conditional use. The condition is, "The use shall be integral part of an existing or otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial multifamily development." If it's not, then it's not allowed. So it has to be part of a, a project that was approved for a commercial and mixed-use residential. Okay, so that's, that's the gist of this, and any questions? I can dig a little deeper.
Chris, I have, if I may. You're saying that that's the only building that it would be allowed in?
Yeah.
So no councils in the future, no planning and zoning in the future could change that?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, okay.
Planning and zoning can recommend a change to the zoning ordinance on any given Wednesday night that you meet, and the town council could take it up and change it at their, you know, their discretion. But that's, that's all how things always are.
Right, right, okay, all right.
And that's effectively what, why we're here, because I, after being able to not permit this, and the mayor and town administration being aware of it, they placed it on the agenda of the town council, went to the council and explained the issue, and I cobbled together quickly a text amendment for their review, and they said, "Take it to the planning commission, see what..."
This is just cleaning up what?
In my view, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But, but, but it has principal impacts. I mean, you should candidly think about it, because what you would be doing is allowing commercial development where there's not commercial development now, not permitted now. So if any, there is any commercial use in the building now, once it is discontinued for a year, it will no longer be able to re-up, re-establish itself. So the, its grandfather status is extinguished within a year of inactivity. So, and so this does allow the building to actually be used in the way that it was originally approved for. And, but this doesn't mean that there's not an evaluation of parking or evaluation of impacts. So, and that's, that's why it came to us, because someone submitted a zoning permit application to, to use it. And, and if they were allowed, we would say, okay, that's fine. We're going to have the county building inspectors go and make sure that access egress is safe, that basic life safety standards are accommodated, any construction happens in the buildings, pass fire code, and I'm going to determine that there's enough parking on that large lot to accommodate the uses that you're proposing, and, and then I'll issue a permit. So, but that was all curtailed by the fact that it simply wasn't permitted anymore. So there's not as if there's no evaluation. There's still onsite evaluation as part of a permit issue.
Commissioner Brown, do you have any?
So, there are no commercial activities in that building currently?
I believe there is one actual commercial business, and we have an expert witness here today, but I believe there's a, a therapy, physical therapy operation, which, as, as you might recall, maybe you don't know, the town council carved out a special zoning text amendment to authorize the continuation of a bona fide physical therapy office in that building. By doing the exact same thing I'm recommending now, literally using the same wording as the condition, they saw, and for some reason, that was the use that was of concern to them, and they, they were aware of that, perhaps, that the effect of their zoning changes would be to prevent that existing business from continuing. So there is a, there, there was a change made in the zoning ordinance after you submitted it that said, "Physical therapy office is a permitted use." So that's the lone exception. Physical therapy can continue, but all these other business types...
Well, prior, prior to the zoning amendments that we proposed, based on the comprehensive plan, commercial activities were permitted in that building?
Yes, they were.
Okay, and this commission said that it did not want commercial activities in that building?
No, this, this commission didn't even consider that building in question, and it allowed, it continued to allow certain commercial uses in the RV1 district. So...
So it would have been permitted had what the commission proposed passed the council?
Yes.
Why did the council not want commercial activities in that building?
I don't know. Like I said, I think this is an unintended consequence. I think their broader concern was allowing...
I mean, obviously, they, they didn't want it because they changed what we proposed, so there must be some rationale for what they...
I think the rationale was within the entire RV1 zone, not within the specific building. I don't know that they perhaps realized that these uses had existed and had been permitted within that particular building. But I'm only speculating because I haven't gotten any clarity on that particular point. But I, but I presented this to the council as an unintended consequence of the change they made, and I believe that was right. No one corrected me, and I, I, it's been my understanding that simply is a, an oversight as they went through them. And what the mayor explained is that they have not supplied updated zoning occupancy permits, haven't filed for occupancy, so the town didn't realize that these uses existed when they were considering their text amendments. Perhaps if they had known that they existed, that, that at this location, they would have created an exception, you know, condition like I'm suggesting here now.
I mean, we have commercial activities right across the street. Therapy offices, I recall, right across the street. Oh. Really doesn't change the character of that area.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
Commissioner Greengold? Okay, so, um, so you wouldn't consider this being grandfathered because it was a, but you're saying there is a therapy, commercial entity in there right now, but it wouldn't still be considered grandfathering?
No, that is actually permitted by right. That's...
That is, I do, I do see it's permitted in here, actually. It is permitted. So, so when BIA was given a conditional use permit in a residential area, was there a particular wording that we needed to have in the code to allow that?
Yeah, so it, it wasn't a conditional use. It was...
Wasn't it nonconforming?
Nonconforming.
Nonconforming conditional use?
And it's still nonconforming, not conditional. It's simply nonconforming.
It's just nonconforming in a residential?
Yeah, and it's under the same extinguishing clause revisions. If it went out of business for a year and didn't operate as a restaurant, just, just shut up for a year, it would lose its right to open up as another restaurant. And there, it cannot be expanded. It, it already, has already maxed its 50% expansion capacity, so it's, it is locked in place in terms of its square footage and occupancies. But, but the situation's a little different. These uses don't exist. There's no nonconforming uses in that building now. There's simply commercial units, spaces, that cannot be leased because the zoning ordinance doesn't allow commercial, except for one commercial use, the physical therapy.
I guess what I, when I read the wording that you have, "The use shall be an integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial and multifamily development." It sounds as though if somebody wanted to come in and create a three-story building, they could basically use that wording to say, well, then I'll put commercial on the first floor. It's, it doesn't, it's not limiting. To me, this word, this wording, am I wrong here? This is what I'm, I'm trying to ask.
No, I think it's very stupid, and maybe that what it needs to say is prior approved, or previously approved, or something like that.
Approved prior to a certain date, or what, or we need to be specific on that particular building? The other, the other thing, and it says, "An otherwise permitted mixed-use and commercial and multifamily development." Maybe Commissioner Brown could help me on this wording, but it seems just so vague that anybody could come into that RV1. And remember, RV1 was a very particular area along the coastline that we wanted to protect from commercial activity, and, and we specifically, I know that Commissioner Blackwelder was very adamant about how we worded things on, on that RV1 to make it very, keep it very low-key residential. Not saying that Horizons shouldn't have their commercial activity, but it seems, isn't it possible, would it be possible, instead of doing this type of, of, of change, to just change the zoning map and include that as an RV2, and make that an RV2 area?
I, I don't think these are allowed.
So you wouldn't have to deal with the, exactly. And then we don't have any, then anybody would understand, RV1 means we're going to keep it non-commercial.
That would allow the other eight commercial spaces to be filled without coming in front of us.
You'd have the same issue, because these uses are not allowed in the RV2 district either.
Well, the book, the bookstore, and that, they are, they are allowed in the, in the RV2. The bookstore, the hair, the hair salon, they're all, they're allowed in the, yeah, the doctor's office are all allowed in the RV2.
The conflict is in the code that came out.
Pick up more, please.
The con, okay. So there's a conflict in the code where the, the lettered descriptions leaves all of these uses in, and says, it says, for instance, "Retail shops carrying one type of interrelated goods such as bookstore, gift shop, floor shop, etc., conditional use in the RV and RPC districts, subject to the requirements of the district where located, except as herein provided. There are six conditions. However, in the table of uses, it says NP." So that was going to be my question. If there's a conflict in the code, which one would take precedence? Because in one section of the code, it permits it, and in another section of the code, it says it's not permitted. It's, it's, yeah, something that definitely should have been caught.
Yeah, it's been, there's, there's only one code. There's the code that's up to date, and that's where the table says not permitted. Then there's the section of the code that is not yet up to dated by general code, the company that updates the code, and that is not effective. So it's, it's the table of permitted uses that has actually been adopted by the, the town council.
So all previous code that was not affected is not in effect?
In fact, it's just not reflected on the town's updated list of, of code.
Right, but we have code. We received the code in this binder as complete code. And it conflicts. So we're here with an applicant, a situation that we should never be in with conflicting code, but we are. And what code is in effect? Is it the code that we see in front of us?
The, the ordinance that was adopted by the mayor and council, and the table of permitted uses are accurate. It's online, it's part of the official code, but the town has not made, despite my recommendations...
Right, I know.
...changes through its contractor general code. It still hasn't done it yet. So what we do is go back to the actual document that the town council adopted on the night of, and the town clerk advised, she keeps that, so we know what the, the code is. While you have a document that's still partially outdated, the town itself has the official law. It's just not publicly shown, and it's a, it's an unfortunate occurrence. I, I, I agree with you, but that's just the way it is. So when I write here in the memo that these uses are not permitted, I'm telling you the truth, they're not permitted in the zoning ordinance. They're not because the town council adopted a code that required, made those NP, not permitted.
Okay, so...
And sent me here to ask you to make them...
My follow-up question is, how long are we affected to act?
Okay. I don't have the answer for that.
Okay, okay. All right. Um, yes, unacceptable. Um, there's no doubt in my mind that these commercial uses should be able to continue in this building. That, that's very clear. I wonder if, because the entire building is nonconforming, and it was nonconforming with permissions for commercial uses, if you could permit them under the whole building being nonconforming as a mixed-use entity. My concern with sending them anything that says multi-unit is that it's going to get caught in some political narrative game, and it's going to come out that we have multi-unit buildings all over RV1, and we know that's what people want. So we know they're going to have pressure to do that. And I just, you know, that wasn't our recommendation, so if they do implement that, that would be a town council initiative. And my opinion is that we do not have the space for the traffic or the parking in RV1 for multi-unit buildings, for multi-unit residences. I think that the old code where it, you know, where you could do either/or, we could potentially get a site plan where a resident, I guess it was like all, along the road was how it used to be worded, could convert potentially. But again, there's lots of traffic's concerns even with that, and we have vacant lots in the center of town that could easily be made commercial, so I don't think we need that area to be our commercial area. And then, um, I lost my train of thought. Basically, we need to figure out a way to make sure that this building owner isn't disserviced by this type of dysfunction in our town, and they can lease the office space in their building without creating a situation for the rest of the town in the RV1 area that causes them to be uncomfortable in their home living town because of traffic, because of lack of parking, etc. That's my feelings. And I do have, I would like to know how, how, I, I wouldn't want to just permit something without knowing that it was either already permitted with the mixed-use permit that was originally given, that the residents wouldn't want. So I wouldn't want to be ad hoc, throwing things into their building for their association, and making decisions for that multi-unit building. So I have questions about how we do that.
Anything further? Commissioner Blackwelder?
I'm sorry?
Anything further?
No, those, those are my thoughts. I had one more thought, but I can't remember what it was. I had one more thought, but I can't remember what it was.
All right, we'll come back to you. Commissioner Han?
Not at this time.
Um, my comment, uh, I guess I'm curious that um, this went before the town council and they did not approve it?
They didn't, it was during a work session, so so they weren't positioned to approve it or deny it. And they thought it best to submit it to the planning commission. I know for a fact that they value the commission's opinions about zoning matters. And um, zoning zoning changes can either be initiated with the planning commission. For instance, you could at any point propose a zoning text amendment. Or um, if this change is initiated by the council, they send it to you for your recommendation. So you have to weigh in on on it either way. So um, and believe me, we, as soon as we learned about this, we cobbled together this quickly and got it on the council's agenda for its work session. So we didn't have a lot of lead-up time to brief the the council. They didn't have a lot of time to discuss it and weigh the pros and cons. But we, they did a round robin discussion, just like you, and decided that they needed to hear from the planning commission. And so that's where we are.
I'm sorry, I, can you tell me your last name again, please?
Philip.
De Philip. Um, Mr. Philip, before this, has there been, when's the last time there was a commercial business in Horizons on the Bay?
There's always been commercial businesses within Horizons. There's one there, there's actually several there now. They just don't operate one hundred percent out of Horizons. So there are satellite offices.
I see.
Real estate agent has a home office in the building. I just lost during COVID a medical billing office. So there's, there's always been commercial spaces within the building.
Now, they're interspersed with, they're not confined to the first floor or are they?
They are, yes, they are. So the building, the way that it was designed, um, the commercial units and the residential units, when you look at the declarations, have a specific um, share of the building. So as a commercial tenant or owner, you get a percentage. But your percentage, when you look at the common areas throughout the building, do not apply to amenities like the pool and the elevators. You have use of the lobby, you have use of the parking lot, but you do not have use outside of those areas that you would need for ingress egress.
And you stated that um, that although it's a gated community, during business hours, it is open.
It is.
So there is not any commercial business that is occurring during the evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And this has been this way, mixed-use commercial since its inception?
Yes, two thousand and three. Yes.
Well, clearly, I I mean, I agree with Commissioner Blackwelder. This is a, you know, you can't get caught between the conflict of um, that uh, we now find ourselves in. And you certainly should not be sanctioned for that negatively because of, because of that.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
I have another question.
What, okay, in your CCNRs, are there specific types of commercial that are allowed in that bottom floor, according to your CCNRs or how's?
No, no, um, it's pretty much left to the discretion of the unit owner as to what they would rent out to or what they would operate as. However, I will tell you, everybody in that building, seventy-two residences, nine commercial units, they're in very close quarters. So any type of business that would go into that building would need to make sure that they, you know, kept with the status quo. So we would never put in, say, a hair salon because of the fumes or a nail salon because of the fumes. Anything that would create a loud noise or um, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of putting retail in that building just because you've got people constantly coming in and out the traffic. So no matter what, that's always something that's in the back of our mind to make sure that the business is going to fit within the community.
Right. Now, so they're rental, they're not, you don't, you don't purchase, these are not condominiums, these are rentals?
Not necessarily. So the developer still owns most of the commercial. There is one unit owner, the physical therapist, who purchased his unit. So he owns his unit and operates it.
Oh, so he owns that, okay, I see how you do that.
Is he also a resident in the?
No.
So he just owns a condo and uses it as a business?
As a business, pays his condo fees, his utilities, yes.
That was, wasn't that one of the other conditions we had? Was that the manager or the, you know, the person who was part of that business had to be in that place? In the RV two one area, in the RV two areas?
It applies to certain types.
Certain types.
Yeah, it's a standard condition, right.
Okay, so I want to go back to the wording here. And again, maybe I need uh, our attorney here to to go over this with us. Does this particular sentence, the you shall be an integral part of an existing or otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial and multifamily development, is there a way that that sentence can be specifically tied in just this particular building and not opened up to any other lot? Or I mean, I I can imagine in that a lot across from Commissioner Brown, you could see, you know, a mixed-use over there at some point if we don't watch out. I mean, why wouldn't they come in and say, well, they have mixed-use in Horizons on the Bay? We're just right next door, why don't we have it here? You know, that kind of a situation.
But the ordinance doesn't allow that, right? The zoning ordinance doesn't allow those uses in RV one.
Right, I understand that.
It's wouldn't be permitted, but I see what you're saying about the the language here, the implication. But it does say and otherwise permitted, not or otherwise permitted. So it's it's existing and it's been permitted.
Yes. Yes.
But I'm happy to, after Larry gives a, an evaluation of what might improve it, I can offer some more comments.
And also, would we be able to make conditions such as all parking for these uh, commercial entities should must be on-site within the parking lot perimeter? Could we do those kind of conditions? I'm sure that's probably already something that you insist on or you want to have.
It's already a requirement. So when you go onto Horizons, um, as a commercial patient, as a commercial employee, you come through the Thirty First Street gate, um, which is kind of across from Lido's. Once you enter onto the property, there are designated commercial spaces, handicap spaces, residential spaces and visitor spaces. And back in two thousand and three, the county said you have to have this many of each of these and where they needed to be located. So the parking lot is spelled out for us.
Do, how many parking spaces per unit do you now total out to be? How many are required or is?
That I couldn't tell you, that was designated by the county.
Okay, so you don't even know if we even have enough parking to accommodate any commercial in there? If let's just say each, you had sixty-two units, did you say in there?
I have seventy-two residential units.
Seventy-two residential.
Of how many?
There are eighty-one units in the building total. One of those commercial spaces is a car wash and the other commercial space is a pier. So they will never have patients, clients or otherwise.
You have a car wash?
We have a little splash and dash car wash. It's its own individual entity and pays condo fees.
And anybody can use it outside, anybody outside can use it too or no, is it just?
I'm sure they probably could.
If they learned of it.
They're going to be told they can't by any of the seventy-two eyes watching.
Okay, and um, you have a guard at that gate or no? No, there's no guard anywhere, okay. So if you have seventy, seventy-two units that are theoretically occupied, you at least have seventy-two spaces, at least one per unit?
We, we have um, two parking spaces per unit if you're a two-bedroom. One parking space for the one-bedroom units.
And are they designated, like they have a number to them, like this?
First come, first served.
Okay, so it's whatever. And um, oh, you would not allow any, any type of use of these commercial entities at night? You would probably not have anything open after five o'clock, let's say, or something like that?
I think it's seven.
Because I think one of the the uses was a dry cleaner. Is I don't think you're going to be wanting a dry cleaner in there.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I would not be uh, the favorite person in the building if I allowed that.
Okay, right, right. And there are also the same repair shops for, you know, certain things. I'm not sure, bike, bike shops, I don't know, I could be wrong, but um. Okay, uh, I think that's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just go to Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, um, BIA just down the street is a non-conforming use, right? It's in the RV one, non-conforming use. I've never understood why we left that a non-conforming use. We have this property, uh, we have properties across the street that are commercial. Seems to me it would be, make a lot of sense just to convert those two properties, Horizons and BIA to a commercial. And then RV one and the remaining areas could remain the same. And we don't have this uh, discussion every time something comes up. Uh, you mentioned a one-year uh, limit or something. Would you explain that?
If the use is abandoned for a year, any future use has to be in compliance with the, with the code. So a future use has to be chosen among the selected permitted uses for that zoning district. So if the business, if it goes out of business or something.
Non-conforming could not substitute itself for that building that is in the day.
The use has to be conforming after that, that's right.
So either if your business, six months into it stops, you have one year from that point. And if there's no use in that one year, then you lose your permit.
You know, you know that BIA was, or before BIA, it was Crooked Eye. And there was a long gap between Crooked Eye closing and BIA. So that was more than a year and it didn't lose its non-conforming status.
Well, it was, there was a restaurant, an intervening restaurant between those two businesses. It was called Mama Lucius. And it never, its one year never expired. It was operating the entire time under permits. So it was vested under the permits that were issued and it was moving forward with that approval process. And um, this question came up with the town. I'm through the town attorney's office. So um, effectively, it didn't meet the abandonment clause um, that you're referring to. The question was considered.
Sure seemed to me that it was closed for a very, very long time. Anyway, that's just.
That was before Mama Lucius, right? That was before.
Yeah, you had Crooked Eye, then you had long gap where they bulldozed the building down. There was a lot of issues about whether the town was going to allow it to continue. And then they had to build the new building. And then once the new building was, then you had to find, I mean, it took forever to get that going, which to me was longer here, but anyway, you've explained.
It was longer than a year, it was much longer than a year. But they hadn't abandoned the use.
Yeah, but they weren't operating.
Anyway, that's not, that's not the story.
That's my question, yeah.
Commissioner Blackwelder?
My question is, how would you suggest that we go about helping you control what goes in? You said you wouldn't want a hair salon in. I wouldn't have known that if somebody came to me and said, I want a hair salon. I would have said, makes sense, there's people in your building, they need their haircut. So I would be curious how the planning commission uh, would be expected to know what your, you know, your HOA association members would want.
Well, um, it's kind of a hard um, direction to give. Because I don't know, um, it just depends on applications. When you get an application in front of you, you consider all of the repercussions of approving a business. How many employees are they going to have? How many cars are going to be parked on the space and on the lot? Whether or not there's going to be any noise, any odors, um, any increase on utilities, any, anything like that. So I'm, I'm not sure what kind of, you know, suggestions to give the planning commission.
And this question now is for Chris, the person making these decisions would, if this were to be conditionally approved as you have drafted, this decision would be yours to make alone? Or would their condo constituents then have the opportunity to come, you know, comment to our commission? How, how would this work?
So the applicant would have to pass the basic threshold with the owner, or the owner's representative first. So they might say no to certain uses, even though they might be technically permitted under broad categories that town has. They'd still have to pass the test with the, the, the owner, the building owner. And the, and by virtue of that community association, I guess there's a governing body that, I don't know how that building is managed. But the specific question about how it gets permitted or denied is one that the zoning administrator does. It's simply a zoning use decision. And we don't have in Chesapeake Beach, the uh, like public outreach program for making zoning uh, use uh, decisions. So it would simply be an application would be submitted and we checked the boxes to see if it complies with the terms of the ordinance and issue the permit if it did. Contingent on the life safety factors and billing, uh, billing, um, billing inspection standards. Yeah.
Is there an application process for requesting a non-conforming use? Do people request a non-conforming use when it's not permitted? That I, I, for some reason, I feel like that's something that has happened in other places.
So no one requests that their use be become non-conforming? Yeah, um, something becomes non-conforming because the, a town council or a legislative branch adopts a new law that makes the property non-conforming. And it's generally made non-conforming over the objections of somebody candidly. So no one really asks for it. Sometimes people ask for determination that their use is non-conforming. They might say, I have a right to this use because it was in this use, I used this property. Before the town changed its law, I have a legal vested right to a non-conforming use. And uh, and if they do that, they, they would be able to continue their use, you know? And actually expand it under certain limited guidelines. But it's extremely rare that we would ever get something like that. But if, if we did, I'd have to make a determination. And if, if there was decision, if there was a disagreement about my determination, it would go to the Board of Appeals for a um, uh, no, not for, it's just a review by the Board of Appeals to make a determination. It turns, it's just a, a, an appeal, an appeal of my decision.
So I would, I mean, I would feel like there would be a way to say, yes, these people have a legal vested uh, right to a non-conforming use by virtue of their building being permitted as a mixed-use building, which, you know, by definition is, and by definition of their, their approvals, was a commercial and residential building. So I would say that they have that vested right right now, um, in my opinion. Um, I guess my question, and I'm sorry to take up your time because my question isn't related to, to this, but my question is, um, my question is, if somebody, say, um, the house behind the library said, I want to operate as a business, but I'm zoned residential. I'm going to now apply for a non-conforming use as, and I think they were, like some kind of exercise thing for a minute. Is there also an avenue in that regard? I'm just trying to, because if we sit here and debate this, I don't want this to go longer than it needs to because we're caught up in discussions about RV one. I don't think that's fair to the building owner. I think somehow we need to expedite their ability to have a business in their building without opening up a can of worms in RV one. So high level, that's what I hope would happen.
I hear your opinion, which you like to do. But we're on this path now. Made a determination, I couldn't issue the permit. I'd be happy to do that. I mean, I think it's a reasonable use of the property to do uses, but uh, that are low-scale within a building like this. But the zoning ordinance has specifically ruled these uses as not permitted, period. And this makes no distinction. And this makes no distinction between whether it's in a building or standalone use. And either way, it would require some type of zoning text amendment to make this happen. So that in terms of timeline, we're, we're in the same place. But we want to expedite this. And that's why we're, that's why I brought it up last planning commission meeting to prep you guys that if this comes back to you, I, I hope we can move it along. It's an unfortunate situation. It's not what you recommended originally. So, but we have to look through these, these, this process steps. I would think that if, if the commission could settle on some wording to make it clear that it's just the pre-existing buildings that have approved perhaps as a certain date, it's clear that we're talking about this building.
Can't we just name the building?
I would think it would be great if we could, but generally speaking, there's an equal protection clause of the, the constitution that says everybody within us, it's applied to zoning, is everybody within a zoning district is entitled to the same rights. And, and they're protected by the standards. So we, in ordinance drafting for zoning, we refrain from making it so clear that it's specific to one particular use or lot. And, or property, rather. So that's why this is worded this way, to basically say, there's a point in time, there's a factual basis, something happened, a building was built, and it is unique and different than any other property within the town. And for that reason, these uses are permitted there. As opposed to saying at this address.
Well, could we use the, the date that the building was put into use as the date that you would have that determines whether you get nonconforming or not?
Well, we're not talking about nonconforming. That's, that's not something I've mentioned tonight. I'm not talking about this not conforming. This is making something expressly permitted by right. No question. And you could put a date in there, like you could say, any building as of 2003 or, or, or just make it clear integral part of an existing and prior approved, permitted, prior approved mixed-use commercial building.
Prior, prior to what?
I think, right.
To the day is, you know, next year it'll be prior to, and they'll say prior to.
Prior to.
Could we use the date the county approved the mixed use?
The town approved it actually, but we could say that, we could say that. You can reference 2003. I've said it a number of times, you could put the 2003 as the key date.
It seems like the solution is to change the language. So it, without naming Horizons on the Bay, they're afforded the opportunity to continue as, as, you know, the commercial mixed-use entity. But make it so that that, that occurs. And I think that the easier solution would be to change this, this sentence here. So that it, without specifically naming them, as I said, it specifically pertains to that location and building. And then, you know, it doesn't open it up to altering RV1, which we're also fearful of. Well, you can do both. I mean, they don't have to be exclusive. We can make the language refer specifically to Horizons on the Bay and add the date. So just to be more, you know, specific about it.
My question then is, would it set a precedence? And could other, let's just say some of those cottages that were built many years ago, could they be added on to? And you could use that original date from 1920s and say, well, this was originally a 1920 building, blah, blah. I just added on to it. Now it's a mixed use. I would fall into that same, I mean, I'm just trying to think, I'm being devil's advocate here and trying to.
Or could, or could the developer, or could the developer come back from Richfield Station and say, well, I got approved for this, but it didn't go in on the plots?
Or, or the commission can simply say, the use shall be a part of the Horizons on the Bay district. Send it to the town attorney and let the town attorney weigh the legal implications and, and work up any language. And if it differs and suggests any kind of wiggle room, then come back to you, minute. Generally don't advise sort of specifying it, but if that would, because I don't think, Cindy, you're, where you're headed is, it raises concerns, concerns because it's, those uses are not permitted in the, you can't convert a cottage to a barber shop.
Theoretically, no. But we know it's possible, I know.
This has been this way for 20 years. If the language goes to the, the attorney and he or she, they're comfortable with naming them, I'm sure they'll leave it in. But if it's too specific, then they could recommend a, a more generic.
Like this.
Or exactly. And then.
Yeah. This, this does look like something that town attorney would have probably.
Well, no, I drafted it.
Oh, you drafted it? Well, I would definitely, if we're going to keep the, because I think a name can be changed at any time. So I think you might want to leave a name out and put in. Is that, would that be considered a spot zoning though, when we'd be doing that? It would not be considered that at all?
But it's, it's very specific. And in compliance with what Chris had said, you know, everybody has equal access. And when you have a specific address in there, you're identifying a sole location, which then, you know, this has got to be equal for everybody.
Doesn't look like we're discriminating.
Other references in the code that mention dates. So Chris, you're saying that you know that there are not any other mixed-use developments in the RV1 area that were approved or operating before 2003? And you know that for a fact? We don't need to do a search? We don't need to do anything? You are confident? Okay.
Are you going to square that?
Who has the Bible?
That's right, right. There's the fids that keeps ringing in my head. Go for this or not, but I do feel like it's.
Well, how about if we do two things, just in case somebody wants to X out the date? How about if we say, not only the date, but it has to be over four stories? Isn't that building four or five stories? Oh, excuse me, I should have known. Maybe we include, you know, two designations, not only the date that it was either permitted or whatever, but then also it has to be over four stories. Because what I'm concerned about, what I'm concerned about is with the 35-foot height limit, they could make a three-story building and they could make a mixed-use situation at the bottom. And they could, I'm just thinking of all the worst cases.
I feel like this is going haywire and getting caught in a circle. And I think we just need to do something common sense and logical. I think your idea of the date was great.
But I think we need a date and we need.
It's boiled down to leadership. If they want to play a narrative game with this and things get switched around.
Reason why.
In the RV2 and there's nothing, or the RV1, there's nothing that this commission can do about that.
I think the reason why you need to is to indicate to any other boards or any other entities that's going to look at this that we are serious about retaining that RV1 zoning characteristic. And, and if we are more specific, then they're not going to say, oh, it doesn't matter what date. Oh, we'll just, but if we do that plus a height, then I think they're going to know we mean business and we don't want that characteristic changed as far as the residential.
So we're tying the hands of future commission?
Well, I mean, let them change the whole thing around if they want to. And they can change, they're going to be able to change it anyway, as we know. But I, I think what you wanted to do is you want to set a, and also, I mean, are you setting a precedence? That's either question with this, this wording. Are you setting a precedence that? Okay, I'm done. Commissioner Brown, what, what are your thoughts about it then? You have some ideas about this. Here we go, say.
Well, my first thought is, it's the first time I've seen it is this evening. And I'm not, I'm not prepared to wordsmith it as we go. My thought is change that block that Horizons is in to a commercial. And, and that seems to me solves the problem.
I would second that notion, Larry, because there's, you know, several problems with the map.
I will make a motion that we change the designation. We'd have to make sure it's still mixed-use residential and commercial.
Excuse me, excuse me, before we go into that, excuse me for stopping you at the motion. Remember that if we do that, we then have to have a hearing. We have, it's going to take months to go through this process. They want a more immediate, they are looking.
There's no, there's no hearing on a zoning change like this?
There's no hearing on this one, is there?
It is a longer.
No, this is not a hearing, but if you change a zone.
Zoning change, so we have to have a hearing.
Not, remember, not by, not by law.
No, the commission doesn't have to have hearings, but the town council will have to have a hearing.
But if we go with the zoning change, we'll have to have.
It's not required by law either.
To be asked.
It's a recommendation in the comprehensive plan that we do that, but it's never been changed.
The zoning change, I, I like that idea. I wasn't sure if it was commercial or something else, but I like changing the zoning. But we wouldn't have to have a hearing on that, Mr. Chukubiac, as a planning commission?
There is a difference between a map change, exchange, and I.
Yeah, there definitely is.
There's a timely difference between a map.
I didn't think for a text change, we needed to go for a public hearing.
With the planning commission, yes, that's what he was just saying. But the, the map.
I think it's a 60-day versus a 30-day.
Yeah.
It has to be announced for 60 days?
I, I think the publishing time, it's different.
Karen, do you know what that regulation is in regards to the posting for the hearing 30 days?
Weeks.
What?
At least two weeks. Oh, minimum of that, but I think it's longer than that.
That then hold up?
Yeah, it's going to.
The town council still has.
To hold it, if we have to hold it, it'll be months before they.
In the interim.
Well, we'd have to have one in August then as well.
A two-sis, until the public hearing and the town council vote on it?
Hearings are.
We do all that, it could take four, at least four or five months. And I think you want to get this resolved before a half a year is up.
Chris, there's no way you can revise your opinion?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You can issue a permit.
Been two or three months.
It already has been.
Day, it'll be a year before we get to it if we don't nail it.
Not creative.
Waxing.
A waxing.
And if, if, if the group that's trying to get this business started doesn't get an answer, they're going to go elsewhere.
The zoning ordinance is, is, doesn't make a distinction between a zoning text amendment and a zoning map amendment for the purposes of public hearing. Town council would have to hold a public hearing for both. Public hearing for a text amendment or a map amendment needs to be modified 15 days ahead. Additional, no vacation.
What section of the code are you?
It's 29029.
What does the comp plan be?
60 days.
Getting on.
Amendments.
Be who may initiate proposals.
Proposals for amendments, supplements, changes, modifications, or appeals may be initiated by the town council on its own motion by the commission or by petition of one or more owners of property to be affected by the proposed amendment subject to the following provisions. Provisions originated by the town council, proposals originated by the commission. The commission may at any time transmit to the town council any proposal for the amendment, supplement, change, modification, or repeal of this chapter. And then the third one is proposals originated by a citizen. Public hearing and notice at least 15 days prior to the date. Zoning map change.
There's another curveball here though. That's not, you won't, you won't see it coming if you read this, but I'm going to throw it at you now. There is a difference between a text amendment and a map amendment for the purposes of how they get processed. A text amendment can be simply done, just like you're doing tonight. A map amendment can only be approved if the mayor and council find one of two conditions exist. That there is a, a change in the neighborhood that requires a map amendment. If something's happened since the last comprehensive plan to change the way we should deal with zoning. Somehow the, the new change is in response to something's happened, changed conditions. Or that there was a mistake in the map. So that there was a mistake in the zoning map that was just approved back in, say, January, was it? So because what you're talking about now is an off-cycle zoning change. And we're not talking about a comprehensive zoning change. You did that already. You did the comprehensive rezoning, submitted a map. So what this is called is a piecemeal zoning. And piecemeal zonings are not facilitated, not made easy by zoning laws. They're very difficult to get. So an applicant would have to approve one of those two conditions. In this case, the applicant is kind of, well, maybe this is the applicant here. But we haven't received anything from the applicant. This is really the town trying to correct the zoning.
Mistake.
Thank you.
I mean, the town, the town required the builder to have commercial on the first floor originally. And the town, until the last zoning change, that was still authorized, if I'm correct.
Sure.
And a zoning change was made, which makes it impossible for them to get new occupants on the commercial space that they were required by the town council to put into their building. I call that a mistake.
Thank you. It's probably a mistake. I still think the most expeditious way to resolve this issue would be a revised opinion on whether or not Chris could permit it right now under. A revised opinion by the planning and zoning administrator that he could approve the commercial uses under a nonconforming use by virtue of that building being a mixed-use building that was required to have commercial space.
Is that?
Well, I would make a motion that the council suggests, and the council would approve, the zoning administrator to reevaluate this as permitted under current zoning law.
That's, yeah, that's, that could be our recommendation to the council.
But hasn't it already been sent back to us?
Do you have a second?
I, I need to have clarification on it. I'm sorry. Say your motion again, please.
Motion that the commission recommends, that the, recommends and approves the zoning administrator reevaluate the zoning for commercial in, in the Horizons building. Off the cuff, so I'm not.
I'm, okay, so we've had a second. So now may I?
Yes.
That seems vague and it seems that it can go in any direction that we will not have any say over. So I'm not sure I understand how that's going to benefit the town itself. We're not giving any real. We're not giving any real concrete recommendation there. They came back to us for a recommendation, they wanted to hear what opinions we had about this, and I'm not sure that's that's not even as definitive as what we've got written here, the, you know, what Mr. Chukubiac wrote. And adding a date to it, that's a little more definitive, so.
Well, he said a specific building name, can't get anywhere. Am I crazy? Yeah, that's as specific as you'll ever get.
So you're saying use this particular recommendation? Are you saying use whatever's written here for your recommendation to the town council, or what are you saying?
Uh, the management of Horizon came to the town administrator or zoning administrator and asked for a decision. He made a decision that it needed a change in zoning to accommodate this. What my motion is, is that he go back and reevaluate that and that the commission would approve a change that would allow this this activity in the Horizons building.
What change, though, are we appro, I mean, I, I feel like we're, I would like to approve not necessarily a change in zoning of all RV1, but a change in the approach of how you interpret the nonconforming nature of the Horizons building. And again, I will point out that if we had an attorney present at the planning and zoning board, we would be able to tidy this up quick, fast, and in a hurry, but instead we're debating and guessing.
Truly no.
No offense to you, Larry, but a, an attorney that.
We do have a motion and a second, and so to the chairman, what, what are we doing now?
So are we going to vote on that? But before, but before we do that, so there is not, Mr. Chukubiac, you do not see a path forward here that we can address Mr. Phillips' concerns tonight? I mean, if I understand this correctly, the town council has submitted this back to us for a recommendation, and we are going to make the recommendation, cannot the language be changed? And then we change it so that it's, it's beneficial to Horizons on the Bay? Should legal counsel decide, wait, it was too specific, or I need to modify that? They have it, and then the town attorney can modify it accordingly, and then it goes back to the town council. Cannot we do that? I mean, it feels to me like then we, we need to make a recommendation.
Does anybody on the council believe that this activity in the Horizons should be rejected?
I, I think that we.
So just let me finish. So if the commission believes that, we can recommend to the zoning administrator that he approve the this use, and then if we want to go back and make whatever other changes are necessary, we can do that. But we can answer the question that this applicant has come here.
Well, first of all, we definitely have to complete this motion and we have to vote on it. But I think I'm not happy with this motion because I think we need to go back and be more specific on what we offer to the council as far as what we feel. Right now, we're saying just let Mr. Chukubiac make the decision, but I think we need to be more precise on the text amendment, which is what they're looking for us to include, is a text amendment. Right now, just having Mr. Chukubiac going back, said, well, I think I'll just go ahead and prove it. We need to offer up a text amendment or or a zoning change on a map, one way or the other.
Why can't we do both?
Why can't we just offer the language change to?
It's a little confusing.
All believe that it should be approved. So we suggest to, or tell the zoning administrator to approve this one exception, and then we can vote on whatever other permanent change.
Motion of change, why don't we just make that one big motion and add it to the text amendment? Or just, we should have then two motions, and I guess if you want to do that, but I don't see why your motion is relevant at all when you've got the text amendment. It's either, I don't see why you need two.
Because it still has to go, it still has a hearing, and it has to go to the town council.
Well.
And so you're delaying a decision to the applicant here.
And I mean, it still has to go back to the town council, right?
Yes.
It's still going back to the town council, right?
Now, it's still going to go.
He has to bring our recommendation back to the town council.
Back to the town council on this?
Yes, I appreciate your objection, but I'm not going to act on it.
Yes.
You're going to take the recommendation back to the town council.
I'd like, I like the message to the county, though. I like the message, and I like saying, I like the idea of you're talking about combining these into one motion or doing two motions. I like that, but if, of course, the town attorney can perhaps, or somebody, but in terms of this, I'm, I know I'm making the right zoning interpretation. I wouldn't want to, I'd much prefer to approve this, I mean, I, but, so, and I don't want to embarrass the council, which I have by not issuing the permit. I, but we're down this road, and now we're trying to repair it by fixing the code.
But it's not possible at this juncture, so we should.
Where do I stop? What types of commercial uses would I think would be allowed there? Maybe a restaurant? Would that be good?
So we should vote on the motion and then offer the language as our recommendation to Mr. Chukubiac to bring toward the town council.
I think it's redundant, I don't see why you need both of these, but okay, I mean, I'm fine with the first one if you want. But let's go ahead and. Go ahead and let's deal with the one motion on the floor right now, which is Mr. Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Brown.
No.
Clerk may have it, Madam Clerk.
I think she does, but.
Commission recommends and approves that the zoning administrator reevaluate zoning for commercial in the Horizon building.
That is, okay, I'm sorry, want to vote?
But you can fix that, you can add some or take whatever you want, but I was trying to write it down. Let's vote.
Read it one more time.
Yeah.
The commission recommends and approves that the zoning administrator reevaluate zoning for commercial in the Horizon building.
Reevaluate.
Reevaluate. Reabout, is it reevaluate?
How about the commission recommends and approves, recommends that the zoning administrator approve the applicant's the applic.
Application.
Yeah, the application for commercial in the Horizon building.
For the, for the, the waxing spa or whatever.
Do we want to do waxing spa or the non-commercial spaces?
Make it specific for the particular business right now.
Oh, I, I was just suggesting, Larry looked at me, and I was in agreement, but I just thought it'd be better if it was just clear about the use that was before us. So it's, because it's, it's meaningful, because it's a low impact use, it's going to blend in perfectly, it's going to be a use that fits into that building. It's what it was designed for, this type of salons, it's like low impact stuff, so it's.
And the purpose is to give some relief to the applicant here and allow this commercial activity to move ahead.
All right, so would you identify your motion, and then we can vote on it?
Well, you're looking at me, I would say yes, because it's a motion on the floor and it's been discussed, but I don't think that solves things. But I think that's a clear message to give to the council, and I support that message, I mean, I think it's fantastic, I, it's a. I mean, I.
And I have a text amendment, so.
But, but you're, but you're sending to the, you're basically, if, because I'm not going to change my interpretation on this. I will reevaluate it, though, I would definitely, and, but I, right now, I'm thinking, I, I can't navigate a way to give her the permit she wants. I believe I wanted to when it first got to proposal. But the, the message is clear, you're saying, we want this use, and we want to, want you to make it happen fast. Short of that, here's a text amendment, and then I think it ought to be something pretty much like the town council sent to you. Maybe clarify with a date or something like that, but, so maybe you do two. I would hope you do two, but if you didn't go two, this is going to go back to the town council with or without your recommendation. It's had a chance to be evaluated, and your recommendation will focus on a more immediate approach, but they're still going to have to grapple with the zoning change, in my view.
The motion's on the floor. We'll, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, unopposed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think.
Now we're going to address the language.
We need to either address the text amendment or address a, okay. Mr. Chukubiac, at this point, since we've given that recommendation, the town council really shouldn't go forward, or you really can't go forward without a text amendment, or they will approve a text amendment that's already written, right? They will approve it.
I think they will, but I, I don't know, I don't know they will, but.
Because the other question I had, if they could hold up, then since she's got approval for that one business, could we then go forward with changing the zone? And maybe make that a three-month process or whatever? Or district, I should say.
And changing it to commercial, making it commercial use.
We don't do this for that area.
What would be most expeditious? If we change the RV1 for that area to commercial, in, change it to commercial use? Or we rewrite the text language?
It would be more expeditious to rewrite this, since this has already gone to the council. They would have to hold a public hearing on, you might actually have to do it in another meeting with an agenda that accurately reflects your considering a map amendment, because the neighbors next door would be concerned if, if something that is RV1 today is going to be a commercial use tomorrow. Obviously, the public needs a chance to come in and share your, so I think you probably, just to do it correctly, would have another meeting, planning commission meeting, to consider your proposed map amendment, and then it would be forwarded to the, the town council. One of the members would have to be there to offer advice for why the mistake was there made. I mean, I could do that on your behalf, and they would have to decide.
Mistake, though. As you've described, the town council changed what we submitted.
The mistake has to be with respect to the zoning map, not respect to the, trying to fixing a problem by changing a zoning map is, is not the standard. The standard is that we made a mistake in drawing the boundaries when we did the original zoning map. That's the mistake, make mistake is about how the boundaries were drawn.
But the, the town council is still going to look to us for a recommendation.
Oh, yeah, they would send that back.
Otherwise, we're going to be at this next month, well, yes, they, we just voted and passed a motion, but they're still going to want to see a recommendation, and sooner they have a recommendation, that we can have a public hearing and we can move on.
Remember, this, this language, I know it's kind of clunky, but it talks about an existing and otherwise permitted use or mixed use building, that's.
Is that the legal term clunky?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's right, that uses, that language is already in your current code. Because remember, the council, when it was reviewing its, reviewing your recommendations, it decided that it would eliminate all the RV commercial, RV1 commercial uses, except for one. And that was physical therapy, it would be, it would be allowed within the RV1 district on the condition that it was this, within an integral part of an existing and permitted building. So this language is already in the code. It passed muster when the town attorney did the, you know, legal sufficiency review, and so we're giving it back to you. We're just saying, apply it to these other uses rather than just physical therapy. That's all this is.
We'd be on the same spot as the town attorney was here.
Yes, exactly.
But, but one thing you might want to do, which is kind of, maybe it's a way of navigating, addressing your concern, Lori, I think you've expressed it very clearly. Cindy, you have too. The idea that somehow we're signaling that this sort of you type of use is generally allowed within the RV1 district, which is not the case. We can send the recommendation to the council with a staff memo that makes it clear that this is intended only for this property to fix this issue, and that is not the intent, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan to allow these types of developments in RV1 period. And that becomes part of the record of rationale and decision-making the legislative branch will have decided. And I think it's very helpful when it comes time to make an interpretation later, well, what really did the town council think when it adopted this ordinance? Well, now they know, because they have the staff memo, memo, or the letter from the chair of the planning commission that said the planning commission recommends this, acknowledging that these points are relevant. So the record is clear, what you're doing, you're not just opening the door to anything. That's a meaningful way, in my view, of addressing the concern, these concerns, other, it's a lot of gymnastics here, trying to make this work and protect this. And zoning is kind of a blunt tool when in many respects.
I think Cindy's recommendation with adding a date in combination with Chris's recommendation of adding context when we recommend to the council about this is appropriate. I just want to complain about how we address the map, but I won't do that.
I think, don't do that. Let's get the language.
No, let's, let's get the language.
Okay.
All right, so if we added at the end of that sentence permitted or completed prior to a certain date, would that be all that we would need to be specific enough for this text amendment?
You should.
Can we add this, so in other words.
Can you read what you?
Shall be an integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed use, commercial and multifamily development that was.
Effective as of 2003.
Either permitted as of or completed at what would be the best, not permitted, you want to have it built.
We got it even better.
Instituted?
Not even better.
Even better.
Permitted and platted.
Okay, now we're talking.
Coward County, because there's no, if there's somehow some kind of mixed use thing, we don't know going on out there, I guarantee it's not been planted in the land.
Prior to 2000.
Four, I guess, since 2003 it happened.
Okay, that might work. Okay, then.
But I want to make sure that the, the land records, I mean, it was platted, and I want to.
You're going to research.
Verify that, so let me, maybe just say 2004 unless Mr. Chukubiac says another date, so I can go ahead and land records and make sure.
Mr. Chukubiac.
Steve, I'm not trying to cover all the bases here, you see a copy of the plat or a portion of the plat embedded in this, in this memo, but there are a lot more pages associated with it, and I just can't recall.
I need bigger glasses.
But I can tell you it was recorded in the land records, it's platted, condominium subdivision, it's locked in place.
You know, it's going to be at least 2010, I mean, we can make a date that we know it's going to be planted by a certain 2010. If we just made 2010 the date, it may not pertain to anything, but at least we know we've got a date, I mean.
And six more years of.
Well, you can, 2004, unless you find that, that, you know, is accurate.
You could go in your memo too, and the town council could say, okay, they, they gave us guidance on this recommendation, it shouldn't be 2004, it should be 2005. And they'll change, and they'll put it in, you don't have to figure it all out, you're offering guidance to recommendations.
Okay.
You're not writing the code.
All right, so.
Kathleen can feasibly write this, this recommendation without us dictating.
She already pulled it up.
A.
Oh, we need a motion for that.
We need a motion for the entire.
We have to have a motion for this text amendment. Text amendment right here, right?
Well, we're just writing a recommendation, we're not making a text amendment.
Well, I mean, we're recommending for, yeah, we're recommending for.
This line would.
This line should be changed and put into, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Chukubiac.
It was recorded in the land records on January 19th, 2005.
Perfect, I think we should make a motion to.
January 13?
19th, 2005.
January 19th, 2005.
We can be really specific.
Thank you for the date. Okay. So do we have a motion?
I think, I would like to make a motion, please.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I'm sort of a bit confused. You're saying that all of the businesses and horizons of the bay weren't platted until 2019?
2005.
January 16th.
2005. The microphone.
Yeah, I need a lot of other things like these.
I don't remember what would happen to you, Larry. I can't protect you.
Her, her left arm is not good.
I would like to make a motion.
Please.
I would like to move staff recommendation with the change that reads as follows. The use shall be an integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed-use, commercial and multifamily development that was permitted and platted prior to January 19th, 2005. Or would it be January 20th? Would we have to go to January 20th?
January.
Yeah, I'll just make it January. Let me, let me.
Because that would make it December.
Let me just say 2000, let me just.
Just say January 20th.
Just say 2005.
Say recorded too.
Permitted, platted, and recorded?
Yep.
On January 20th, 2005.
Prior to January 20th, 2005.
Tell them.
On the 19th, if it comes in.
Yeah, okay.
And it doesn't need much.
Motion, let me just restate the motion, please. The use shall be an integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed-use, commercial and multifamily development that was permitted and platted and recorded prior to January 19th, 2005.
During 20.
Prior to January 20, I'm sorry.
I don't, should it be permitted, comma, platted, in?
Platted and recorded.
And recorded. And recorded. permitted, comma, platted, comma, and recorded in, on January 20th, 2005.
But we'll let her.
She said prior.
Prior to January 20th, 2005.
Commissioner Brown, are you making a joke? So do we have a second?
I'll second that for number one, three, and four. The one I'm leaving out is the retail establishment, because the property representative said that she wouldn't want a retail establishment in her building.
But the application goes to Horizons on the Bay before it comes to Mr. Jakubiec, is that correct?
Yeah, they have to have a lease.
So they would shut that down, yes, yeah. So that would be shut down, contained before it came to us, if they did not want that use of retail.
Does that mean that they can't sell little wax goods, goods or something? Can they not sell products?
We would determine that at Horizons on the Bay. Yeah, we, we don't need to have our dog in that fight.
Because number, he has a salon, but it also has a travel agency.
Well, they also have a dry cleaner. I don't think they're going to, I mean, they're going to be, there's an HOA, they're going to be restrictive. But I think we can allow them to do that, but.
Do we have a second on this motion?
We do.
Okay, all in favor, are we voting?
Second, but excluded number two.
Okay.
My.
You made a change.
Yeah, I can, I can retract my.
Okay. All right.
It's a regular second.
So it's all of them, not excluding two. Yeah. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any opposed? No? Motion passes unanimously?
Okay.
Best 10 years of my life.
Congratulations. We came to some conclusion here.
All right, now, our next item on the agenda is item number eight, continued discussion of the critical area regulations. And we are starting. Leave all.
We're on the buffer.
Page 21.
21 is where I have it too.
Okay. Mitigation for impact to the buffer?
Right.
Okay.
We were starting on page 17, the buffer.
Actually, I think, you know, we could review, in a sense, we're kind of, went over buffer, you may want to, did we have anything more on about the?
Already did much of 17, though. Yeah, I thought we changed the language.
Changed some languages and whatnot. We really ended up at 21 by the end of the night.
Yeah, I have us on mitigation for impact to the buffer.
Yeah.
Item D.
Well, according to the minutes, the commission requested Mr. Jakubiec to inquire to the state commission about a 300-foot buffer, so don't we need an answer to that?
You're going to look for. Mr. Jakubiec?
Yes, so I actually just had a conversation today with Critical Area Stafflin's question. And no jurisdiction in Maryland has increased the buffer, except for one that they know of. But the more we discussed it, the more they thought they would go back and do a little more search. One jurisdiction increased it to, from the 100-foot buffer to 110 feet. But remember, there's two buffers here. There's essentially 100-foot buffer, and then the 200-foot buffer, when, when the land is RCA, you have to give a little more space. But it's generally not done. They hadn't heard about it. They don't see that it's particularly a problem with them, because basically you're making it more restrictive within the critical area. They pushed back a little bit and said, well, what is the rationale? And I explained that a lot of the land is wetland, marsh, open spaces, and preserved areas where development is to be discouraged anyway, and that an expanded buffer is consistent with that overall policy approach. But I did say there's one area where it would increase the, it would impact existing neighborhoods. And, and this gets to the question about where is the buffer in town? Like, because we talked about, like, how many properties? It's kind of hard to make a determination about that, but there's generally an area that you might not have thought about as part of the buffer. And I wanted to highlight it to you. That's why Sharon has these two maps, the critical area map and the wetland buffer, or the wetland map. They're, the wetland map is from the comprehensive plan. Both of these documents are in the comp plan, but this one was one we did, we did ourselves, the council ourselves. So if you look at this large wetland map, you'll see the light blue shaded areas is idle wetlands, idle estering and marine wetlands. So if the, if it's open water or wet, idle wetlands, that's, that starts the buffer. And you would measure from the edge of the buffer 100 feet inland or upland, and that would be the buffer. So if you look in the northern part of the town, the large wetland, which is associated with the South Creek that comes out of North Beach and comes into town, and it, it, you know, essentially goes right by Seagate, you know, and you know the beautiful wetland you see when you're driving on Bayside Road. Okay. Now look at, just on the north side, or the top side of that light blue wetland, you see houses. And you'll see E Street, David Street, and D Street, and then alley. They all dead end right at that wetland.
Where are you, Chris?
Here.
It's up here.
Right up here.
Okay.
Okay. So if you were to put a tape measure on that edge of that wetland and extend it up David Street or D Street, you're going to pick up a few houses, right? Now, if you made that 200 feet, which I think was actually the request, at least I had 200 feet, not 300, but whatever the case, maybe, maybe you extend it, you're going to bring a lot more houses. That would mean that any type of development activity, including, for instance, building a bigger shed in the backyard, or building a driveway, or a new house, would trigger the buffer requirements, and, and apply buffer requirements where they don't exist today. So that's, I think, really the, the other potential is, I don't know for sure, but the, you know, the townhouses in Bayview, oh no, Bayview, I'm sorry, they're exempt from the critical area laws. Forgot. So it's, I think that is the principal area up there, north of town.
You're saying that the buffer doesn't apply on the IDA?
Essentially, there, there's a buffer there too, but it's called the modified buffer. And it's, it's basically, the ordinance basically says, we acknowledge that part of this buffer is not natural anymore. It's been developed already, so it's modified buffer. And the rules governing development there.
Well, the current code says a mod, a buffer exception.
Yes, that's right.
Not modified buffer.
Right. But now, but with the new code, it would be modified buffer, because that's what the state law has now for us. So, but the buffer exempt term is fallen by, out of use.
So any modification to the naturalized buffer then becomes a modified buffer?
Um, no. No, not at all. It's still very much the natural buffer, because the, the rules, the regulations are protecting it and sustaining its natural condition. So even if it were developed, you know, and, and you'd have to do extensive mitigation and all that, it's still considered buffer. It's, the modified buffer is only those areas of the town that were modified, developed prior to the critical area law taking effect in 1985. Okay, so it was, that was kind of locked in place. So the modified buffer aligns with the, the red. Wherever the red on that critical area map matches water, it's modified buffer area. Or as Larry says, what we currently know, it's buffer exempt.
So this, the red area is the modified buffer?
Right. Except for, as I said, except for where that red area meets the, the green marsh, and as I mentioned before, the, the marsh that I just pointed out to, that.
Buffer isn't shown on this at all. There's no lines delineating where the, where the buffer is at, either modified or regular.
The, the official critical area map, which is on the town's website, does show the modified buffer. It's, it shows it, and, but the actual, the map we're using today, and it's in the plan, doesn't show the buffer, the modified buffer. I caught up in this again today, and I had actually asked Sharon to print me out a critical area map, not realizing that the map that she has is the one that doesn't have the modified buffer. But the one online does, and I actually brought a small copy of it. I showed that version to you before. And so that's when I, as a matter of shorthand, I'm saying, anything that's developed along the Chesapeake Bay and into Fishing Creek, around the Marina, all that is modified buffer. And it's really all you need to know. That's the modified, it's been developed already. Anything where the, the land is in open space is green, the marsh, all that is, is classic buffer, preserved, natural open space.
Oh, Chris, on this 200 feet that we were talking about.
Yes.
The only issue that we would have would be that one little area up past, north of Seagate. It's actually by Larry's, right, your house. Is that by your house, Larry?
That's the IDA.
Then, so you're talking that the 200 feet would impact a few houses up there?
Well, it would affect more than a few. I mean.
How many are talking, like?
20.
Or it'd be at least 20. So right now, what is the buffer for those houses right now? How many, and what are we talking? Is it?
It's 100 feet.
It's 100 feet right now.
So.
But they're not in within that 100 feet, is what you're saying?
There are, you know, there are.
There, there, so they're already in that critical area. So if you went to 200, it really wouldn't matter, because you're already in.
No, if you went to 200, you'd bring more in.
Well, would you? I mean, would you? I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, you would.
Would you?
Yeah, you would.
Because it's not, it's more than just that one house. You're talking.
Yeah, you'd go deeper into the neighborhood. I mean.
I mean, I don't know. I mean.
Here's the wetland right here at the larger table.
It looks like you're just going into the.
In the IDA, though, are they protected from, are we talking about modifying the buffer for the IDA? Are we talking about?
The next section of this is modified buffer. Section that we're going to.
Right.
So right now, we're in the buffer section.
So the actual buffer.
Yeah, the buffer.
Does the fact that it's IDA affect that at all?
In this case, the, this is the, the buffer. And the fact that it's IDA is good in terms of the number of uses that can be permitted and everything, if you're a property owner. But you still have to contend with the fact that you're up against the natural buffer. This is not modified or buffer exempt area.
Right.
It's the wetland that's there. It's, the wetland itself has not been developed, and it's growing and expanding, and it's, so that's not the modified buffer.
Yeah, this, so we also had a conversation in the previous meeting about you asking a question of whether or not we need to provide relief valves in the buffer at all to accommodate growth. I, I guess, I guess what I'm confused about is, we're talking about 200 versus 100 feet, and what specific areas are we talking about making that change for versus what areas are we talking about not providing a relief valve for development in the buffer? Because we've talked about two things. We've talked about not providing it because we're, we don't want to build in, in the RC zone, and we don't want to provide a relief valve in the RC zone. And then we're also talking about increasing the buffer, and I'm just confused about, you know, this red IDA area versus, you know, Randall Cliffs outside of Richfield Station.
Right, right.
Those areas.
Well, I. So you're talking about the Panhandle. It extends down southern part of town, area that the comprehensive plan recommends be preserved and perpetuity is open space, and it has a, a buffer now, and it's 100 foot. That's what the, it's a naturalized buffer. If you've been there, it's, it's nature. The actual buffer as applied is bigger than 100 feet, because it's a expanded buffer because of the steep slopes. So a buffer is not, like, you can't, it can't be mapped, because it's, it varies based on a calculation that is applied to the land. But let's say it's 100 foot plus some additional acreage. If the ordinance were changed and it was 200, that would mean that it would be 200 plus an additional acreage. So you would basically be applying, applying the buffer protection to a greater swath of land along that property. Okay? So that's one way of thinking, like, we're protecting this area.
Right.
So that would be the, the goal for that further north in town, where it just meant, it's not so much protecting it as, as sort of, I guess, as you're kind of protecting it, but because this area has been developed, and it's not buffer modified, it's, falls under these higher standards, almost is locking in place the pattern that's there now. It's basically limiting, limiting the ability for people to do other things with their property than they've already done. What they have now in terms of pervious surface or impervious. What they have now in terms of pervious surface or impervious surface and lot coverage is locked in place. And you might say, well, that seems onerous, and on the other hand, this is the area that the the mapping of sea level rise that is in the comprehensive plan showed is likely to be inundated with water over time, because that wetland is expanding, and there's evidence now of it actually expanding. You have wetland vegetation popping up in backyards, we have standing water, we have high water tables, all kinds of issues. And, and the town is working on that sea level rise plan, and one of its recommendations there is that the town consider the option of allowing people to have the state or federal government buy out their properties, and the town would administer it, and allow those people to move to another place, high and dry from the encroaching wetland, and thereby expand that natural area through that area. So the idea of applying a buffer to this area doesn't seem particularly adverse to what you're doing in terms of overall policy. I mean, it's an environmentally sensitive area that is increasingly becoming so. And a lot of these properties that were never, quote, regulated, are becoming regulated now, because they have wetlands on the properties. And this has become very complicated for, it will be very complicated for the residents in this area as soon as they seek a permit or seek to do something. My experience has not been any permit activity that I'm aware of in that area, except for further removed, and it was minor stuff. But should someone come in for a development proposal, now we've got issues, because you have a tidal wetland, and you have to, MDE has to make sure that you can fill in that wetland or do development, and they're gonna be really reluctant to permit something that's gonna interfere with the flood, the flood attenuation of that, holding back the floodwaters that that wetland provides.
You're saying that regardless of what we do, these people that are in the buffer have a hardship, whether we increase the size of the buffer or not. If we were to increase it to 200, yes, they'd be engulfed, but regardless, they would still have a hardship by virtue of being where they are.
Yes, except for that, in that first 100 band, 100-foot band, closest, first 100 feet closest to the water. The people who are 200 feet are fine today. So applying a higher buffer to that area almost seems like it's too soon. I mean, if we follow the theory right, where it's almost like ahead of the game, but it's, it is planning, you know? So you gotta weigh it on both levels.
And there's no way to separate the two out?
I don't know if there, I hadn't, had never, just until we were talking today, I hadn't even thought about it. You kind of anticipated my thinking on that. I was thinking, maybe there's a way to say, on the most environmentally sensitive parts. Yeah, there is, because right now, there's a way. We say that the standard buffer is 100 feet, and the buffer in the RCA is 200 feet. Which gets back to the point, the buffer on the Panhandle is 200 feet, except for, I think, at some point, you get up close to the yellow part of the Panhandle, which is LDA.
Right, so I guess, and we had talked about just eliminating all valves in certain areas. And you were going to ask that question, all relief valves?
In that.
Valves?
Well, we had talked about, in the RCA, it was section A and B, that was going to provide a relief valve for development.
Page 18?
I believe so.
Eighteen.
Thing. And the question was, should we talk about the relief valve? Or should we just not allow it, because we don't want to?
Clearly, when you say relief valve, you mean giving someone the ability to do something, grant some relief so they can get out from under the burden of the ordinance?
Yes, and then we had discussed if, you know, it might be difficult if we wanted to do something, recreation, or the municipality wants to, and then, and then we then discussed, if that were to happen, we could amend, we could recommend amendment of some sort, and just leave it buttoned down until if somebody desired something. I was wondering if you asked that question.
No, I didn't ask that.
So.
Certainly not in that way. I blew it. I didn't, I didn't really get into that. I didn't, I didn't. I didn't answer, I didn't ask that particular question, or ask it that way. But I can follow up with them about that, but.
Mr. Jacoby, can you give me a reference? So on the, up, up on the campgrounds, for example, okay, with the water, so 100 feet from the water would be involved, the residences up there?
You mean on B Street?
Yeah, B Street. So 100 feet in from, you're going, you're measuring from the water.
Yeah.
100 feet would involve the neighborhood, and if you extend it up to 200 feet, it's just more of the neighborhood.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, except that that's the modified buffer. That's the part of the buffer that's been modified. So, but, but yeah, it's, 100 feet gets you to just the top of the slope and maybe halfway in on many of those slope front lots. And then, because it's expanded, because it's steep slope, many of those lots are in the entirety of the buffer. Okay, what's called the expanded buffer. But that's the buffer, the modified buffer. You can do a lot in the modified buffer.
Right.
You just have to do mitigation for it. As you know, the houses have been built there, and they've been built bigger than older houses. You couldn't do that in the classic buffer.
So give me an example of the classic buffer, then.
Have you been out on the Chesapeake Railway Trail? Look around.
Okay.
That's nature, it preserves wetlands, marshes, and then the lands along those marshes, the upland sections, that's all buffer.
Naturalized buffer.
That's right.
Okay.
And another example would be, as I mentioned before, those, those houses that are built in D Street and David Street, up north of that big marsh, as you cross, going into North Beach, that beautiful marsh on the left-hand side. You get up to First Street, you make a left, and then you make the next left, you're on a town street again. You're gonna go up into North Beach on First Street, make a left, and you're back in town. There's a little pocket neighborhood there, and it's right next to a wetland that's growing and expanding. As it turns out, that stretch is not modified buffer. It was never declared modified buffer, even though there are some, you know, basically low-density development along there. So any activity in that area would be classified, would be regulated as buffer practices, or buffer development. And just as if they were on a preserve forest. You know, you might think about keeping the 200-foot, 100-foot the same, because the 200-foot applies to the RCA. So wherever the map, the critical area map is green, you have the RCA, and it's automatically 200, and it could be expanded, too. So, and, and then, otherwise, it's 100 foot. In other words, the state went through this thinking, and that's why they, this, it used to be only 100 feet, but I don't know, maybe 15 years ago, 10 years ago, they changed it to make it, to expand it to 200 feet.
But in, in our zoning, we've put rather severe restrictions on resource conservation area activities, so I don't see where it makes any difference. I mean, they, the, whether, when you're talking the buffer, it's about what kind of things you can do in that 100 feet or 200 feet, or whatever you want to call it. But we've already said, we don't want anything done in the resource conservation area, basically. I mean, there's a few exceptions.
There's a few.
So, and, and this code allows for some exceptions, too, and a process for executing those, and getting approval, and variances, and all of that. So, I'd see, I don't see where it makes, requires a lot of time for discussion, because we've already been through this through about eight meetings last year during the comprehensive plan.
No, potentially giving away the fits.
Wasn't sure, actually. He didn't smile.
Item two on page 18, it says, applications for subdivision or development activity, land located within, in the RCA.
You mean 2A and B?
Well, just read two now, just two. Shall include a minimum buffer of at least 200 feet, okay? That's 200 feet. It's presently just 100 feet anywhere else. So it just says, if you're green, you're gonna, you have a 200-foot buffer, and that, that's pretty extensive. So what, maybe what you were, you were thinking at the last meeting was making that 300? But I thought what you were thinking about is making the 100, 200. In other words, it's starting.
That's what my suggestion was, but then Lori went to three. I guess, okay, so keep, continue reading that. So it's 200 feet from a tidal waterway. Didn't we make this change already, Sharon? We already did, and we deleted 100 feet. We deleted that part out, right? So we've already, we've already done something with that. She deleted, deleted 2B.
Yeah.
We deleted 2, yeah, we did. We deleted A and B, actually.
I agree. I guess what it was heading was to say that, I think the commission already was okay with keeping it 200 feet.
Somebody keeps going, yeah.
I was saying the same thing you're saying, I think, but, okay, so this is a long way back to where we were, that I think we're fine, and what you're saying is that we're gonna eliminate one, A and B, and, and we're not gonna give a lower preference for tributary stream. If you're on a tributary stream, it's gonna be 200 feet.
Right.
Too, because, and so it's two. Are we okay with it? The 200?
We were okay with that last, last meeting.
With keeping it 100 foot plus an expanded buffer where it's necessary?
I mean, the only reason why I brought it up is, as you were saying, is that as we have more encroachment of water in that area up there by Seagate, that was my concern, is that why, why aren't we acting now to try and send a message to that whole area up there? This is all changing as we speak. And yes, you may not want to, you may want to go to 150. I don't know what the, but I'm just saying, 100 does not seem adequate for that area at all. I mean, I don't know how clear it has to be. We're seeing all kinds of damage up there.
What do you mean?
The Seagate.
Adequate, adequate to do what?
Well, I'm just saying, if somebody wants to build a structure of some sort.
What are these structures there?
I'm just saying, any, I know, there are, of course there are, but I'm just saying, do we want to start limiting the type of structures, the outbuildings, the whatever, whatever? I don't even know what size properties are up there that could build outbuildings. I'm just throwing this out as a protection to that, them, the homeowner, and to us, the town, because, you know, in Southern California, the towns were, or their cities were permitting all kinds of things that should have been on slopes and near, near forests, and they shouldn't be permitting, and all of a sudden, we have forest fires, we have slippage, and oh my goodness, oh, we should have done something ahead of time. Are we at that point where we should be foreseeing that this is happening, Noah's predicted it, and yet we're not doing anything about it?
So to address those points, I need to direct your attention to page 19.
That's good.
So this.
We're back to 21 where we started, you know, at some point.
So this is, this section begins on page 18, says, development activities in the buffer. Okay, so let's just think about the buffer in the area that we're just talking about, the geographic area we're talking about, where there's some houses, where there are houses now, real neighborhood. If you go to, there are certain activities that are allowed. B1, B2, and B3, let's skip right to B4, because that's the relevant thing. A new development or redevelopment activity on a lot or parcel that was created before January 1st, 2010. Okay, that would, that would be those neighbors, that, those neighbors, your neighbors, that's them. The buffer, so these are things that A, B, and C would apply. The buffer is expanded for highly erodible soil. So if the, if you have really wet soils there, erodible soils, well, it might be 200, like Cindy's saying, but it actually could be even longer. You know, you could expand it more. The development or redevelopment, that means like you take down a house, build a new house, or build a new shed, is located in the expanded portion of the buffer, and not within the 100-foot buffer. In this case, it would be the 200-foot buffer, if you expand it. So in other words, if that buffer were expanded, because there were erodible soils, they'd say, if you do some building, quit your building on that side of the lot. Practically speaking, the lots are so small there that it's almost irrelevant where. And number three, C, rather, this is the kicker, I think the most relevant. Mitigation occurs at a two-to-one ratio based on lot coverage of the proposed development activity that is in the expanded buffer. So you have to do mitigation. It means you've got to plant a lot more vegetation, so. And number five is a septic system, I think that's really applicable. And six is dredge materials. So basically, you can do what you, you could continue to do what you always do, but but you have to, if you go to number three, excuse me, go to number three, you have to get a variance from the Board of Appeals. So you have to, like, you have to shift your development activity on the expanded part of the buffer, if that's applicable. And once you prove that you could do that, you go to the Board of Appeals to get your approval. And it's a variance, because in other words, the ordinance is saying, you can't develop in the buffer, right? In the expanded buffer, this 200-foot buffer, you can't develop there. But the relief valve maybe is the variance process. So if you get a variance from the Board of Appeals to build a bigger house, or build an addition to your house, or build a whole barn, or whatever, that's fine. There's a process set up for that, and it would be up to the Board of Appeals to make a determination about whether your development activity is consistent with the ordinance. I would imagine the Board of Appeals would look at a proposal, and if it was too big, or too much development, or was not elevated far enough above the flood zone, they would say, no, resize your proposal and bring it back, because it doesn't, doesn't comply with the critical area laws. But basically, what it does is, right now, the first, the houses within the first, within the first 100 feet of the buffer, of that marsh, will have to go through this variance process, okay?
But I, I don't, I mean, my experience with the variance is, the Board of Appeals rarely denies a variance, and I've seen, anecdotally, up on the hillside, I mean, right now, where they gave a variance to build on the top of the slope, I can stand there and probably drop, you know, four feet, because we're right at the edge now, and it's weaker and weaker. So I don't, I guess my point is, if we're, I, I think it's, it's not sound to, to depend on the Board of Appeals for a variance, and that they would deny that. I think we, if we have to increase the buffer, we do, but I don't think we should have it based on the fact, well, you know, there's a process, and they have to go through, and they'll do it. They will do it, and I've seen the variances time and time again. Hence, you have some of the residences up there easily, because as soon as you mention variance, or as soon as you mention, my attorney is present, all the wheels fall off the wagon.
Well, when we get to page 39, that's variances.
Right. Yeah, yeah, we talked about page 39 the last time, because I have it in my notes, page 39.
Chris, what responsibilities does a town have when we permit something, allow something to happen? And, and we somewhat know that there's. And, and we somewhat know that there's going to be possible damage that is going to occur down the road. What responsibility does a town have? At that point? I mean, I've seen it in Southern California, it is constant where they make these errors. A town just. They were afraid to say no and all of a sudden they're responsible for all these permitted properties that have fallen down hills and been burned up, whatever. And they didn't have the courage at a certain time when they knew that this was going to be a vulnerable area. But oh my gosh, they let it happen and then the towns are all on the hook.
Well, the. This, the. Comprehensive plan. Set in motion. Work on sea level rise. Meet fruition now in the town. And so the town is grappling with that. And I've seen the recommendations and a lot of the recommendations are going to come back to this body. With advice for adopting stricter. Regulations. Or. Development within flood hazard areas. And it would redraw the flood zone, not based on what FEMA has today as the flood zone, but based on. What the projected. Sea level rise is. So we're building in that capacity to look forward, not just, just to what is regulated for insurance purposes, you know? But for what? Best matches the long-term plan that says get density and development potential out of these flood zone, these flood hazards areas. So I think you're going to have a lot of work ahead of you to grapple with those issues and it's going to be really important work for the commission because. That's where you're going to put into practice that principle you just said. And it's going to be difficult because a lot of people have vested interest in the, in their property and what currently is today and. And how to navigate through that is going to be really important to, to get right. Over a matter of years because it's not, we're going to have, we have some humility here because these are difficult. Policies to get right. And, and get buy-in from the community, but. So I think that's how you do it. But here in, in this code, this is what the critical area. Rules. Set forth. Really strict requirements for the buffer. Basically, but it recognizes that sometimes things have happened along the way and people have an expectation to be able to. Continue to use their property in a way that you could. No matter where in the RV zone you live, just so happens that you're in RV zone that is. Within a buffer. You can still use your property, you still build a house, you can still rehab your house or make it bigger. But you have to prove that the standards for getting a variance are satisfied. And it's a, it's a relief valve. But it's also. A higher level of standards and it's up to the Board of Appeals to. To make a judgment. About whether these expanded. Development activities should be allowed. So think about, just take a, travel through down David Street, D Street, see a typical house, imagine. A proposal for a house that's twice the size, that builds up, builds the entire buildable envelope, let's say. It's allowed, it's permitted, it's legally acceptable, that's where our code allows. Question is, should it happen? And that question would be resolved. At an administrative hearing. Right now, that question will be resolved simply by the zoning administrator going through a technical analysis and saying, yes. That matches with the town council's rules and procedures. Now you have to go to the. Board of Appeals. And prove in front of a public body. And if the public is against it, they can have expert witnesses to counter the expert witnesses of the applicant and the board ultimately has to make the right call. But at least there's a. Increased review. Right now, that review process applies to that first one hundred feet. So if you expand it, you're going to bring in more houses if you make it two hundred feet. Okay? It so happens that that two hundred feet is the, basically the ultimate expansion of the. The flood zone, flood hazard area, long-term. So to my way of thinking, it wouldn't be. Stupid to apply higher levels of review to an area that's likely to flood in the future. The question is whether the time is right and how strict you want to be now to apply those strict standards. Just to, to properties that are probably going to be just fine for the next twenty years. That's the question.
I, I agree, but then every, every aspect you look at, at right now environmentally and sea level rise in the water. I mean, I, I think Vice Chair Green Gold said it. It requires courage. It, it might not be a popular opinion, but you know. If we're going to preserve and protect. Th- these lands and this town. We have to be. Rigorous and. And that means it's not popular and that means, okay, so you can't develop here, but you know, this is not. Forty years ago when you could, you know, develop as, as you will and this is my property and I want to, you know, I can do whatever I want. You can't because you're gonna. You're destroying the, the seascape, you know, the, the air quality. All through, you know, overdevelopment on, on people's property and, you know. Today, the, the hillside is. You know, it is extremely precarious. I mean, they've just had traps up there for months and, you know. Basically, the. The groundhog is sitting on top of the trap eating an apple and he's like, bring it, you know, and then we have kudzu, which is not a ground cover there. And, you know, I just watched my, my neighbors, the sloughing of, you know, I'm probably one of the few properties that I've cut the kudzu back and I'm trying to get. You know, vegetation, daylilies to grow on that hillside, but it's precarious. And then when we allow, you know. Thirty-five feet, you know, people go, if they don't stay on that footprint and then, you know, people come in and they want to develop the, the property. And you have a landscaper who doesn't even get a permit and they take down a hundred-year-old tree. Oh, I didn't know I was in the buffer. I didn't know this critical area. That's right. So then what? They ask forgiveness instead of permission and, and I just think it's going to require courage to make some tough decisions and, you know. They have to be strict. To my mind. Stricter.
Is there a way to say that? For, I guess there's no way to really do that, to say that any new development would be within a certain. Restricted buffer? I guess you can't do that. Wait, because where, what she's referring to is the new, the new development because they raise an old property, they raise an old cottage. All of a sudden they can put up this McMansion and encroach maybe on that buffer if they get the variance, whatever. Is there any way that we cannot allow that variance to occur by just saying any new development will definitely not incur, you know, go past a certain. Distance, in other words, two hundred, you know, the, the new development can't go. I'm just throwing something out, but it's not working. I'm not, I'm sorry. But I'm just trying to say, her problem, that problem up on B Street was because an old property was raised and a new one was built. In a much larger. Compartment, you might say than the old one. So it was, to my eye, it was too close to the edge and too heavy and too this and too that, but. This is what happens.
Right on the footprint of the original house and that's how they got around that. They're like, okay, just build on the original footprint. So they did build on the original footprint. But.
What have you.
You know, yes, it's thirty-five feet in the center, but oh, there's a sloping, a sloping roof that exceeds thirty-five. I, I'm just, my only concern is that I don't think we should. Decide. Our policies and the, and the. Procedures based on the fact that if, hey, it doesn't work, then they can get a variance. I, I just think it's, it's not sound management myself.
All right, so you are suggesting that we go back to the two hundred, one hundred. Just because we're going to impact too many houses up there, especially in the north. And we don't want to get into that because you're, you're assuming that this, our other committee is going to bring back. Some recommendations that might. Allow us to tighten up our regulations. Is that what you're suggesting here?
Yeah, I, I think.
That's pretty much what you're saying.
But again, I'm saying if you did do two hundred. Two hundred, I mean, two hundred regardless. It wouldn't be out of line with the, the policy directions that you've given so far in terms of sea level rise and protection because it would work to the. The general benefit of reducing the development density or intensity within these critical flood zones.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what the intention.
So.
Lot of people that. Give us enough permission. That just happens all over the place. And, you know, how do you, how do you?
Code enforcement.
Do you catch, yeah, well, how do you catch people before they do anything?
Well, you, you can't, but I think that, you know, as we discussed. For when our compatibility standards went before the, the town council, you know. Several of the, the members of the town council discussed the, the fact that this seems restrictive. This seems like we're stifling development. This, you know, and then they asked the question. Are other jurisdictions this strict? We're not strict at all. And, and we have, you know, the treasure of the Chesapeake Bay right out, right in front of us and, and I feel like. Our, our, you know. Policies and our amendments have been. Pretty. Pretty flexible and pretty abstract and, and. We, we find ourselves now in this situation and, and B Street is just an example. There isn't just one house that is grand. There's now a second house that's grand and. It's going to keep happening and, you know, just like us, I mean, I don't have a background, I'm not a planner. I haven't been educated academically in that regard. But there's also, I'm willing to bet that there's members of the Board of Appeals. Who have not been trained and they're going by what? Gut feeling, maybe a little bit of advice and. And these have long-term ramifications, so.
So the question of what to do on B Street. I think we need to deal with that. And. And you deal with it not by eliminating the variance process.
No.
Okay, you deal with it by changing the rules to make them more strict. Okay, so that rather than saying you have to have thirty-five percent open space, maybe you say on lots that front steep slopes, you have to have fifty percent open space. Okay, so you, now, if someone incur, incurs a hardship because of that standard, you still can seek a variance to that, but then they've got to prove that. That, 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 that in addition to the other variances they're requesting. Or you say that the minimum setback, notwithstanding where the construction was originally, the minimum setback must be eight feet and there's no variation from that standard, you know? But you, you have to kind of change the rules. In the zoning ordinance.
Didn't you put in something like having a soil engineer or an engineer evaluate the slope?
Yeah, we did that. Well, that's what we did, so, so.
Well, if, if we did that, then would that have a footprint been, really been allowed to go on there because I would think that would have really contribute to the slope degradation.
That's in theory because the property next to mine up on B Street. They had, he's an architect, they had all type of studies done and the studies were conducted from the middle of his driveway. Okay, not by the slope, middle of the driveway and they, he, he got them, acceptable. And so. Where actually you, you see the impact of the structure that large. There, the study wasn't conducted at that site. This study was conducted maybe, you know, twenty-five feet from the slope. So I, I'm just saying, you know, I agree with you. Chris, that if we change. The, the policy so that instead of thirty-five. Feet or thirty-five percent, it says fifty percent. Go, approach it that way, absolutely. And then, yes, they, you know, individuals can get a, go make an appeal before the Board of Appeals and. After going through the other. You know. Regulations, then they can have their opportunity.
Or you say there's a maximum amount of coverage. Period or maximum size of a house where there's a greater distance from the, the edge of slope that needs to be provided, but there's a whole set of standards that are applicable. And this planner actually recommended to a previous planning commission, whole body of those types of regulations and the plan, you're, just like your counterparts, but. Quite some time ago, maybe eight to ten years ago, said, we don't want to touch that. It's not something that we want to change. And so that's the town, you know, the democratic process. Now we got to, we're coming back to it and I hope that you will do that, but we have to get through this critical area stuff first. We have sign regulations that are really important to get right too. And there are a lot of things that I would like to advise you on that I think need to be changed that would really help implement your plan that weren't part of your original list of priority things. If you really, but we, we, I really want to get through this. And we're so close, we're right on the edge of it. And I know it's getting late already, it's getting close to nine already. Can I just? Suggest this, that I assemble the changes that we made before, get it to you and I'll send it to you as a complete document in addition to sending the critical area staff who are coordinating, who will actually review it because they're going to have to eventually approve it. And then the next meeting you would actually, then you could. Tweak any further changes that you, you might have, like on the last four or five pages, if you want enforcement, the variance process. And the growth allocation process. I really don't want to get into growth allocation tonight. It's really complicated. And I know. Commissioner on the far right side over here is going to have a lot to say about that, my right side, so. It, it needs a whole level.
Idea of you assembling something that we can work from rather than us going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So I, I like that.
And can I suggest this? That, because our last meeting on the issue of modified growth area or buffer exempt area, I placed before you the question about whether we should keep it as it is in the code. Or adopt. The, the, the model ordinance. The model ordinance really doesn't say much. It doesn't really deal with it. But the, the way that the town modified or changed the critical area law quite some time ago. Created the, the ability to do buffer yards, to have offsets, to plant, to do two to one mitigation. It, it just, it was more responsive to the fact that we, our buffer, modified buffer for commercial is Marina. And you can't sort of have a Marina, functioning Marina if. If everything's set back fifty feet from the, in this wooded, you, you can't really have a Marina that way. So the town went through a process of modifying the, and I would like to, with the critical area commission, actually, I, I sat in those hearings. And I would suggest that I'm going to send this back to you with the way that the town has done it already. So we're not going to tinker with the. The modified buffer area. That. Like, for instance, and. I don't know that we're going to have much development in the modified buffer. The modified buffer area is Rodden Reel. Abner's along Harbor Road and then Fishing Creek Marina. That's the modified buffer for, for non-residential. Okay? And, and that's, that's it. And then the other part of the not, the, the other part of the modified buffer is residential. And I'm not suggesting any changes to that because it's, what we have now is pretty much what the model, what the model ordinance provides for. So it's really, the, the big change is what the town did years ago in making it. Modifying the critical area. Ordinance. For Marina type of activities, Marina development.
There, there are a couple of things though. The requiring of redevelopment to reestablish some additional buffer that I think would be important to incorporate. You know, you go to Harrington Harbor. And they have a nice buffer around their Marina. It's protective of the water and. I, I don't think we want, I think we would like people to modify. You know, add buffer when they redevelop. That would be helpful. I don't know if Abner's has to plant more grasses or anything like that, but there's not a lot of plantings. In what they have right now. So. That would be my only. Concern about how it's written. And then there's also something about, in the way that it's written. That's basically an escape clause for everything.
Yeah, basically it says, if you can't do all these things, then you can come up with another solution, provided it's got critical area approval. But it does, but does, I'm telling you, the. The buck stops with a critical area commission and they don't mess around in this stuff. That is like, you don't want to, if you make it there. You're up against your odds. But, but it does have the provision, but it does reflect the reality. It's hard to apply, apply these sort of standards that are supposed to apply to everybody in the state to your unique situation. And I like the, the fact that it gives an outlet for us, the town to. To, for something different too, like, you know. Like, you know, we got a sea level rise issue here and you've not made room for the seawall or raising the property. And let's assume your development has to be raised. Now let's design this project, you know? Don't put stone water management in an area that's going to be underwater in 10 years, because it's not functioning anymore. And, and so I kind of like the relief valve, because it allows us to advance the public interest too, uh, rather than just the developer advancing, the developer's interest.
Oh, yeah, I, I think your idea of presenting us with something that you feel like you can administer and us reviewing it is a good one.
But I think we're really, really close, because we go through the entire ordinance and we're just right through the buffer stuff now. And I think we settled this issue of 200 versus 100. And, um, I just would like you to, you can go forward with the other issues you have to address.
Stand by, um, it's, it's 8:35. We've, um, normally we're seven to nine, so I am happy to keep going. I just want to be mindful of time and, uh, um, you know, what, uh, what everyone is interested in continuing, uh, for what time or?
I think we're still, we, we got, we're going to not have a meeting in August, so I think we need to get us through, us through as much as this as possible.
Okay.
I do have one more thing, Chris, on this G, fee in lieu of buffer mitigation. I think we need to catch up with inflation. And I think we need to increase the penalties on page 23. So when you start, uh, you know, sending stuff our way, I'd like to see something a little more.
Oh, more than?
Punitive, more, you know, more punitive, you might say.
Means for the fee in lieu, the 150?
Yeah, the fee of lieu and also, um, uh, yeah, fees and lieu and, uh, anything else, we're going to have a little bit of teeth in this, in this whole process. Um, otherwise, we're kind of just throwing this to the wind.
I also have a quest, a question after you, sorry.
Are you, um, have you finished, uh?
I am, yes, I am.
Commissioner Blackwalder?
So I would like to understand in our next meeting, what the intersection between the proposed tree ordinance and all of these regulations will be? Because, I did my visual aids. In one section of the tree ordinance, anything under this isn't going to require a permit.
Is that the sun?
That's the diameter of the tree.
This is a 75 inch diameter. Other one.
We have visuals.
The lesser standard is still pretty big. It's this.
And what's, what does that contain? What, what's this one?
Well, this is 50 inches.
So, and?
So I have a forest conservation area behind my house. And so if the tree ordinance were applicable to that forest conservation area, I'd say 75% of the trees could be eliminated.
So you're saying?
My question is, where is that ordinance applicable? And how does it intersect with our code?
So that forest protection ordinance, that forest conservation ordinance or forest conservation?
The tree city or the, you know?
And I'm just saying the forest or area that's right behind your house. That's a forest preserve, deed restricted, open space, forest space?
Yes, yes.
So you, it's theoretical that you could cut them down. You can't cut, cut them down, because it's a deed restricted or easement restricted. But, but if it was a private lot or with not, without that protection, yes, then they could be removed.
So in the IDA, anything, well, actually, anything less than this, because it's not by a public street.
And be removed.
Would not require a permit?
Without a permit?
That's very different from like Annapolis's tree ordinance.
So what, 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 the, the towns, this tree ordinance that was, it hasn't been adopted, it's affected?
No, it hasn't. And I'm mainly asking the question, because I want to know how it affects what we're doing. And also, you know, that it's, it might need to be adjusted. Like, did you advise on that or did councilman Boating come up with that?
The, the tree committee came up with it, but I, they submitted it to me and I, I offered some comments, uh, to Holly, to, via Holly, to the group, the town administrator. But the, um, so in the IDA part of the critical area, you can remove a tree. Any private property owner can remove a tree. The requirement that the town imposes is that, that tree be replaced by another tree on the same lot.
Right, so in other?
And the definition of a tree is which size? It's, or is there a size?
There's, for the purpose of the critical area, we don't apply a size. I know.
Tree could be that.
It could be, yes.
I mean, there are trees, they say something like that. There's just a lot of holes in that tree ordinance. And then there's also the section that says it doesn't apply to the forest conservation areas and it doesn't have a number. And I would hate for that to get not submitted. And so now this, this app, people might think it's applicable everywhere and they are asking forgiveness instead of permission. And in most tree ordinances that I've seen, the requirement is that you get a permit and you get special permit for this, not that you don't have to get a permit.
So you?
Critical area.
That is 75 feet?
This is 75 inches.
75 inches, so anything under 75 inches needs no permit?
It's, it's confusing the way it's written, because it says not by a public walkway, but I think that would include Cox Road. I think it would also include middle subdivision, because there's no public walkways. Um, I don't know, this is why I'm asking the question. And then this is also, this is the low end of what most tree ordinances are requiring a special permit. But they are still requiring a permit for other trees.
So, hey, we're departing from the critical area regulations to discuss this. Okay, I just wonder if you're okay with that. But you might, might remember that I wrote up a, a section on trees.
Removal, right?
Removal of.
Tree removal.
Tree removal, yes.
Because right now, the way the town protects trees is, is in the LDA and the RCA, you can't simply remove trees. But in the IDA, you're permitted to. And the town has, by virtue of just practice, has asked people to file for a permit application to remove a tree, any tree, even little trees. And the town issues those permits. Unless it's clearly an issue where the, basically, they, no, they, across the board, we would issue a permit to remove a tree, whether that tree is small or big, if it's in the IDA zone. And we've seen the loss of some trees, because we don't have an ordinance yet. So this ordinance does protect the big trees on these lots, okay, the very big trees. Okay, that's just that ordinance and, and it hasn't been adopted, so maybe there's still work on it, I don't know. But in terms of the critical area law, um, th- this document that I sent you and then I'll include it in the final package here, does say that, uh, you have to submit an application, makes it a requirement to do it. And it makes it a requirement that you actually replant, um, on the same lot, uh, a, a native species tree. And it has other kind of type of requirements for trees. It may not, it's not a tree ordinance so much, because it's written for the critical area law. So it's just meant to say, apply the similar set of guidelines for the RCA and LDA to the IDA. And it allows the town to track its canopy coverage, um, by knowing what trees are being removed and.
What is the applicability of the tree ordinance? That's, I guess that's my question, where does it apply?
It would apply throughout the town. And it would, it, it wouldn't allow removal of trees in areas that are already protected. So you can't say, you can't rely on the tree ordinance to remove a tree in the RCA, because the critical area laws prevent you from doing that.
That should be clear, because that, that is one thing that needs to be very clear in the tree ordinance, because people are going to get confused and.
Maybe, maybe we should make sure that is clear. And, or in the, in a forest conservation area, you can't remove a tree that's in a protected area.
It also needs to be clear.
Right, you can't remove a tree on someone else's property. You can't remove a tree on a town's property unless you're the town. So, I mean, there's, otherwise, if you, you own a prop, piece of property in town, you have a tree on it, you're allowed to remove the tree under certain circumstances, you know?
And the other thing is the ramifications are very light, I mean.
Yeah, $250 per replacement can, $250 per replacement can of a tree, $150 per replacement understory tree, that's really nothing. That's really a minimal amount of punishment if they've taken out, you know? But I'm, I'm not sure everybody knows if they're in critical areas or not. I'm not sure if they understand, you know, we haven't communicated any of this to them. So they need to have something sent to them and said, hey, you can't take out trees. And I, again, I think the, um, the, the area, fee in lieu of program is very little amount of money compared to how much damage they've done taking out a huge canopy tree, critical area.
Yeah, that's a free pass.
You're referring to the tree ordinance?
I'm sorry, I'm referring to the one you're talking about, the critical area. I'm talking about the critical area.
Very light, they are both very light.
This one, I, I will think, if you come back, we need to go over this. And I'm not sure, again, I, I, I think that's not punitive enough if they take out these trees. It, it should be a, and they, all, everybody has to be notified of this, nobody knows.
Miss Chair, I'll demand a minute. Pause.
Yes.
We're going to take a minute and a half.
A minute and a half.
Recession.
Okay, we'll start timing you go, go fast.
Start thinking about, uh.
Toxic amongst yourselves.
Just do the, uh, one-minute limit on comments at, at, after this.
Okay, there you go.
So you can think about it.
Do you think, Chris, at the next meeting, you're going to be able to conclude this critical area?
We have July meeting.
We have one at the end of July.
End of July, yeah, let's have it ready for ju, the end of July meeting to go.
Are we doing, we're doing critical area to include tree removal?
Well, it, the removal of individual trees in the critical area, this.
Right.
Not that tree ordinance.
Not the tree ordinance.
Council-sponsored legislation that they're working on.
Right, but this is what we have to, and it's very important, I think, but, uh.
Oh, ha, you know, I take down 112-year-old tree. Whether you put up six trees, you know, seedlings, I mean, it's like.
And then do we have a, do we have a definition of what the tree is, really? I mean, as, as Larry said, we need to identify what a tree is.
Well, the critical area has a definition of tree.
Wish I would have said that. You know what, I haven't seen that definition, I'm not, no, where's that?
If I can find it, send it here. You are s.
Oh, it's under definitions, right? Did we get it in, no?
Huh, I'm not seeing here, I thought we had a definition of tree in that.
I know we talked about it, but I don't think we saw. Wait a minute. Yeah, you are squeaking. I guess, I guess I didn't read it in this.
Where did I see it?
Okay, so it's actually under the term forest on page 55 of the version 2018.
Oh, I may not have that version, that's a problem.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not in this version, the new.
No, there are no definitions in the new section, but we'll trans.
Cause it ends at 50.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
What?
I love it.
Billy's of the chair, but what? They're the sizes.
I don't think that's really adequate for the way we're discussing trees.
Right, right.
So I, I can't locate it, I thought I had seen something.
If there's something you're going to include next month or next meeting for that, I'd appreciate it.
Right.
We have to define that. All right, we're back. Oh, Laura, you didn't see, okay, so there's no definition in the new model of the tree, okay, there's no definition there, it's.
Uh, yeah, I just think that's something we need to address and make sure that nobody's confused. And that the fine for being confused is plenty high. Well, these people, the developers have the money to pay the light fees, that's why you got to make them.
So maybe in this removal of individual trees, you need to add with the definition too.
Yes. We're looking for a definition of a tree if one currently exists and if not, we'll.
A definition of a canopy tree versus a, uh.
Non-canopy tree.
I guess a non-canopy tree, right, or a?
Understory.
Understory, thank you, I couldn't think of the word.
Understory tree? I don't know what an understory, I guess, I'll wait for the definition.
If you can, if you can wait.
Waiting. Okay.
And, and I mean, I think we should also discuss or have it documented if the tree's damaged in a storm. Like, we've had quite a few storms that they've come through and damaged.
The critical area, you're talking about the critical area.
Evaluates whether the tree's damaged, because I know a lot of people of late have removed trees, because all, all they have to say is the tree's sick.
But that's another thing that's in other tree city ordinances, is that they require that arborists do that, it's not the homeowner.
I, that's nice, yeah.
Yeah, but that's not what has been put forward.
Yeah, capricious, like, oh, yeah, because they want the tree gone.
Right, but, well, you, I mean, I, I know that the green team wants to save trees and I, I know that that's the intent. I think that the devils and the details of that particular ordinance might not do as good of a job as it could in that other tree city ordinances do.
Well, I know they're pursuing the Maryland legislation where, you know, 5 billion trees planted in Maryland by 2025. And I know Chesapeake Beach is now partnered with that.
Well, I know you care about trees, so, I mean, just maybe look at that ordinance, you're on the green team, talk to your green team constituents.
The green people.
About the green people, I, I know that they, you know, I know that their intent is sound.
Yeah.
But like I said, sometimes devils get put into details and the intent isn't met.
So anything else before, obviously, we're not doing, going any further for critical area tonight. So we know next, next month, we're going to talk about the removal of trees and finish the critical area. And you're going to provide us with information where we stand? In regards to?
All the previous changes when we deal with the 2018 into the 2020 version. And, um, make the changes we've discussed over the past couple of months to the 2022 version. And then add the tree section I drafted, along with the, knowing that it's not adequate yet. But added, but adding a definition of tree and tree damage, and you know.
Be in lieu of, uh, try to amend that to make it more current, I think, be in lieu of.
Oh, yeah, and fee, that's right. The thing is, I have to find a basis for that, I have to think through that.
I mean, I don't know when that, was that a function of the ratio was determined at that time? I mean, I don't know when that, was that a function of the ratio was determined at that time? Uh, you know, was it thirty-five percent of that time? Or, you know, is that how they determined how much to make that fine? And then kind of use that same process? So, um, anything else? Then if nothing further, then we'll do the one-minute round robin. Anybody? We'll start with you, Commissioner Blackwelder. To my left, to my left.
First of all, I'm often very proud of the backbone of this commission and the work of this commission. Um, in one instance, way back when I first joined the commission, that I was very proud of, that we accomplished was, we got the tennis courts to Beach Elementary School preserved in the site plan for that school. And I was proud of the town too, because the town reached out to Beach Elementary School and they said, people use these tennis courts every day, these tennis courts need to be preserved. And, and that went forward in the site plans. I don't know where that's at, and I will be writing Holly about it. Because last year, in the month of July this month, there was a work session and an MOU came, uh, came to the town council uh, from the Board of Ed, and it was going to be an agreement. And the proposal, you know, was a use agreement. I agree with some of the points of the problems with that use agreement. You know, mainly, it should remain a tennis court. And Beach Elementary School children should be able to continue to use it as they have been historically during the day. We don't need to take the use of that tennis court from Beach Elementary School during the school hours. Um, part of the proposal was also to, uh, for the town to pay the two-hundred-thousand-dollar refurbishment costs and some insurance fees and, and things like that. And that was shot down roundly. And I was very disappointed in that, because we just granted a food pantry that's in North Beach, two-hundred-thousand dollars. Uh, and I think that the town should have recognized the importance of those courts to those communities. Um, so Beach Elementary School will be ribbon-cut. And I really hope that it's not without a tennis court or without a refurbished tennis court. And I know that there are tennis court contractors in Calvert County right now, working at Dunkirk Park. I don't know how far along, you know, if those talks fell apart or what happened to them. But it is the wrong decision for the community. Those courts are used every single day. And it will be a very bad look on the administration. So I hope if those are falling through, they can be saved. I hope that somebody can approve money or negotiate something with the county to get those tennis courts, uh, up and running and shiny new with the new Beach Elementary School. And again, um, credit to Chairman Foltz for, um, having the commission write a recommendation to the town council to preserve those courts. And credit to the town council at the time. I think Derek Fabretman had a lot to do with that, um, for pushing that forward. And the commission did its job on that. We did a very good job. I don't know what happened to it. Hopefully, it has not unraveled. But, um, commission did great work on that.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Blackwelder. And, and I agree with you, they are used every day and, uh, not even converting them to pickleball, but I, I think the last thing I had heard that they were going to be protected, because they are in constant use, but good point. Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
I just want to say I appreciate all the staff at the town. I see all the work they're doing in the town. They finished working on the roads in Richfield Station and now they've moved on. Um, but I see them all the time coming in and working and driving through town. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate it.
Excellent.
I, I would like to refer back to Laura's comment. That was part of our recommendation in the comprehensive plan that we have those tennis courts as part of our recreation and amenities. I think it is imperative for us as commission, and I shouldn't be doing this. We should write a letter to the town council recommending that we agree that any support that is needed to get those tennis courts in shape, that, um, that we should do that. So I don't know if we need to bring that up at the next meeting, or we probably have to bring that up at the next meeting. A thought for the next meeting that we ask our, our chair to write a letter to the town council on behalf of our tennis courts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brown?
I'm a bit disappointed at the progress we've made on this critical area document. I think we're started on page twenty-one and we're all the way to page twenty by now. And I think part of that, uh, is because, uh, we had this issue with horizons. And, and the staff memorandum, we didn't get till this evening to read during the meeting. It would be helpful to get issues out to us, uh, earlier so that we can review them. And that way, we come prepared with our comments and we don't have-
I think we all had that. We had that a few days ahead.
It wasn't with my packet.
But well, yeah, we, we had it last week or so.
Yeah, if you, if you-
Did you miss his, his email address? I'm sorry.
Okay, well, anyway. We, we have a lot to do with this, this, this document. And, um, we bring up new issues during the meeting, like trees, which are maybe important. The tree ordinance and document, but it, it wasn't on the agenda. And, and we mix things up. We need to be more focused on what our, what our agenda is and, and follow through with it. The, uh, one question for Chris. Uh, you talked about the modified buffer, uh, keeping part of that from the existing code. Or is that what you're saying, is, uh, keeping the buffer exemption area section? Bring that into this, uh, new document?
Yes. So it would be the, what's called the buffer exempt area.
Yeah.
As, as it's applied to the, quote, non-residential or other development types.
And it's, it's like a ten-page section or something.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Um, and the last thing I wanted to say is throughout this, uh, this, uh, draft document that we got from the state, they keep referring to Comar and say, in accordance with Comar and in accordance with this. I don't know, I hope some of you have, uh, looked at what they're referring to. But each one of those references could be three or four pages long. And, uh, my goal would be to deliver something to the town that is readable. They don't have to refer to another document and then this document. And, uh, that they, it's all in one package. So I would like to propose next time that we eliminate every reference to Comar that we can possibly eliminate in this document. So the reader doesn't have to do research to understand this.
What's, would there be anything in Comar that we would need?
Where it says in accordance with, uh, Comar, as stated in Comar, twenty-six point twenty-three point oh-six point zero-one. I mean, you know.
Right, very confusing.
Try it. We can't clean it up completely unless we want to include that section in here. But with, our goal should be to make this, to simplify this for the people that live in this town and have to try and understand it. I think as we saw this evening, understanding this document is not easy.
Yes, I, I agree with that. I just don't want to eliminate. Like, I mean, we have to at work consult afar. It's like this thick.
That's too bad.
I know, but without it, we have no regulation. So that, that could be looked at.
I'm just saying, I will propose that next, next time to try and get rid of references outside this document that, um, are confusing.
Or have it as a citation, but not necessarily. I agree with you. It's not-
One citation at the beginning, report of Comar.
It's, it's, nothing's worse than you read three lines and then it says, go to this, and then you're like, where's that? And then you, so I agree, we should simplify and make it, you know, understandable and readable for those who live here. So they don't need a Venn diagram to understand it.
Right.
It's like, okay, so it's, it's like in the Comar, when I looked it up, it's got a thing in here that says, a local jurisdiction may not do X, Y, and Z. Now, it's not in the document here, in the document we approved. The other thing that's wrong with, with including this is that somebody changes this outside of the town and it changes our document and we didn't know about it. Even if we've studied all these Comars and we've got, we're, okay, that's okay. Next week, they could change it and we, and we don't know it's been changed. So.
Or not.
This, uh, critical area document is for us to approve. And the, and so, uh, and we send it off to the state, correct? And if they have a problem with it, they can come back and say, well, you left this out. But, uh, anyway, that's my opinion. I, I prefer simplicity to complexity.
Thank you, sir.
I, uh, simply would like to, uh, agree with Larry about staying on point with topics. It's confusing, it's, uh, it's inefficient. And as chatty as I am about a variety of subjects, I just want to, I want to get our, our work done. And so it's hard for me to do that when we're going in a lot of different tangents.
Okay, well, I will, uh, I'm going to rule with an iron fist at the next meeting in July. So there's going to be a timer up here and when you hear it, we're moving on. The only other, and I agree, we, we want to get this accomplished sooner rather than later. The only other thing I, I just wanted to mention, um, that, uh, many jurisdictions are, uh, I guess, stopping the use of plastic bags. And Inarundo is probably the latest, uh, currently Calvert County doesn't have that. And, um, I just, you know, it's, it's food for thought that, um, the new legislation will ban plastic bags from being distributed to customers at grocery stores in favor of, uh, paper reusable plastic, uh, grocery bags. And I think, uh, similar bans have been now passed in Baltimore County, Baltimore City and Howard. And most of these take effect in twenty-twenty-four. And I just, you know, food for thought, maybe in the future, um, you know, we can begin, or if not the, uh, not the, the county, um, maybe the towns. Because about three hundred municipalities nationwide have done it. You know, fifty-five countries now and eight states. So I think, uh, we should, it's for consideration. So thank everybody. Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I was-
Sidebar. All right, if, if nothing else, we-
We need a motion.
We need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All right.
Yo, we are adjourned. Don't go to the grocery store. No, but they're of concern.
I mean, that might be a concern, but that's not this.
It's so complex. It's very-
I'm afraid I might have sent it to Larry Jaworski rather than Larry Brown.
Oh, I bet you did.
On the email.
I bet you did.